Why don't we go ahead and get started if we could. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 20th meeting, joint meeting of the City Council and Economic Development Authority. This is a work session, a little bit differently than your regular public meetings. The public is certainly invited to attend but not participate in the discussion. The discussion will be here at the table with the EDA and the City Council. At the conclusion of the meeting, we'll also be having a closed session which will be closed to the public, and so we will ask the public to leave at that time. But we're delighted to have you all here with us. We have a special guest to start the evening off, Greg Leach. We're delighted to have him here and look forward to what he has to say. I'll maybe turn it over to the City Manager who'll make the introduction, but thank you so much, sir, for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council, Chairman Novotny, and members of the EDA. Greg, maybe if you could join us here at the table, and I'll make a brief introduction. And we are very glad that you've graciously agreed to come and join this meeting. We've been in some discussions over the past several months where we've really through Jim Snyder and Rick Goff reached out to Greg to tap some of his thinking about the city of Falls Church and where we, what our opportunities, strengths and weaknesses are in the regional market for office, retail in particular. And we've told him the Falls Church story, and he's provided us with a lot of feedback, and we thought it'd be great to have an opportunity to let you all have a little taste of that. Let me just say a word about Greg and Delta Associates and what they do. Greg is the founder and CEO of Delta Associates. They've been serving the region with analysis and regular reports on the region's office, retail, and housing sectors. For a fee, they will produce reports for you, and here are just a couple of examples of work they've done in the region, whether it's their normal quarterly reports on various different sectors of the commercial real estate market, or specific tasks that local governments have asked Delta Associates to help them with for specific analysis, to help them understand the market in there in a specific location. And so Greg has a great viewpoint of our regional market, and he's prepared just to speak for about 10 or 15 minutes tonight, and then answer questions, and then have a discussion from there. Greg?
Well, thank you. I'm glad to join you. This really is a continuation of discussions that Rick and Wyatt and Jim Snyder and I have had for the past seven months. Those discussions have been far-reaching and stimulating and frank, and not always easy to hear. For example, the office market may not come back this decade, and even if it does, I'm not sure that Falls Church is well-positioned to take advantage of it. That's my opinion. So I would think that the resources would be better spent by Falls Church on other property types. Falls Church suffers massive retail leakage. There's much more retail spending by those who live in Falls Church than there is retail dollars captured in Falls Church. And yet, retail is very high on the list of positive fiscal land use. It generates a lot of benefit to the community. Whether we like it or not, Falls Church is dependent on the commercial real estate industry to drive economic sustainability. And yet, Falls Church is known in the development industry as not a friendly place to do business. And yet, we're dependent on the commercial real estate industry to drive economic sustainability. So those are just some of the topics that we had talked about over the past seven months. It's my view that Falls Church's strength is its attractive location, its schools for residential development. And yet, this can be, but does not always have to be, economically unsustainable as a land use. That's the primary quandary that I think you face. So these three gentlemen asked me to come and speak with you about market conditions and economic sustainability. So I'm here to do that. I want to make a couple of observations, give me a little bit of a primer on the scale of the market, the condition of the market, and economic sustainability as I know it. So let me start with context. According to our records, and the EDA's records may be better than ours, you have a one and three-quarter million square feet of retail space compared to 40 million square feet in Northern Virginia and 73 million square feet in the metro area. Retail spending by residents probably supports twice that amount of retail space that you have here. That's something to be studied. I don't know. Office space, you have one and a half million square feet. Arlington has 41 million square feet. The metro area has 406 million square feet. Apartments, I think you have 1,400 apartments. Northern Virginia has 100, oh, of which 335 appear to be Class A. Northern Virginia has 166,000 apartments, of which 60% are Class A. And the metro has almost 400,000, of which 40% are Class A. Detached single-family home price last year averaged $874,000. That's twice the metro average. I mentioned the office market. We have an elevated vacancy rate and flat rents for the past several years. We do not have an oversupply of office space. We have under-demand. There just hasn't been demand for office space for three years, and likely won't be for three to four more years, and we can talk about why, but that is the case. We used to be a metro market that had demand for about 8 million feet of office space a year. Over the next 10 years, we will probably average demand for about 3 million feet. That's a result in the change of the structure of the economy, and also how tenants use office space. There simply is less space used per worker, as well as we have a change in the type of jobs we're growing. Apartments, the press has led us to believe that we are vastly overbuilt with apartments. That isn't the case in our view. We are modestly overbuilt, and by 2017 or '18, the market will be back to booming rents and per-project absorption levels. This is due to change in age cohorts, job shifts, student debt, and other things that are shifting the ratio of owner-renter towards renter. And we see that as a structural change that will last for at least another 10 years. Falls Church is well-suited to take advantage of this at the top end of the market, but to do so could compromise economic sustainability unless it's properly accommodated. Retail, the Washington metro area enjoys among the lowest retail vacancy rates in the country. It also has one of the lowest levels of development pipeline in the country. So the odds are that that market will remain healthy through the end of the decade. And again, Falls Church is well-positioned to capture some of the leakage that it now experiences. Does that mean I'm finished?
It's gotten better compared to the start, so...
I see. Okay, so here's the sustainability primer. I'm on the Economic Development Authority of a couple of jurisdictions. We have spent a lot of money on, and I'll pass some of the benefits of spending that money onto you without charging you, on assessing the fiscal impact of various land The priority, from best to worst, of land uses is the best is hotel, the worst is Class B and C apartments. And in between, they would rank, second is, second-best is retail, next is office, fourth is new, clean, flex industrial, fifth is expensive, that is priced well above the median condos and single-family homes, sixth is Class A apartments, seventh is old, dirty industrial, eighth is less expensive, that is priced below the median condo, single-family, and townhouse, and ninth, last, is Class B and C apartments. Now, generally speaking, numbers seven through nine, that is, old, dirty industrial through Class B apartments, are a fiscal drag. And one through six, that is, hotel through Class A apartments are a fiscal positive. That's generally speaking. The key economic sustainability issues that Rick and Wyatt and Jim and I talked about over the past seven months, I'll pass those on to you, and then I'll be quiet and we can have a discussion, were these. The assets of Falls Church you can't lose sight of, they really need to be what you focus on in leveraging the community for economic sustainability. You have great schools. You have robust retail demand that is not being met in the community. You have a desirable place to live and develop, especially apartments, condos, and single-family You notice I didn't mention anything about office. Your sustainability challenges are primarily two. I like to narrow things down to things that are pretty simple. Of course, they aren't. The first is adding more residences without materially adding more school-aged children. To do that, you'd be adding very high-end condos and apartments, as well as select single-family detached and attached units, and more importantly, keeping the apartment stock you have from becoming Class B and C. Creating incentives, or at least not getting in the way, of the private sector investing, including tearing down and rebuilding the apartment stock. So that's the number-one challenge. The second is on the retail side. Improving the retail stock you have so it garners more of Falls Church retail demand, that is slowing the retail leakage. And second, encouraging the retail development in the city of the type that slows or stops Now, on balance, I'm convinced that these challenges can be met with insightful studies, sound policies, new incentives, and careful administration. May I go now?
Not yet. Why don't we have a few questions for you, if you don't mind indulging us? Why don't we start with the EDA? Mike, would you like to have your side of the table, or any questions you have for Mr. Leach?
Thank you. I'll look to my colleagues on the EDA to go ahead and start.
Thank you for the presentation. My name's Eric Pelton. I had two quick questions that come to mind. Number one is, I didn't hear the word "metro" at all in your assessment. I wonder if you consider Falls Church to be metro-accessible, or if you consider at least part of Falls Church to be metro-accessible, and how that would impact change in growth and development? And the second question relates to your last point about growing the retail sector, and I was curious if you had any thoughts how to do that without losing the feel of a local community and the established small businesses and the, you know, without all national large chains, essentially?
Let me take the second question first. Accomplishing, broadening the retail base to slow down or stop leakage, I don't think means that the local business needs to suffer at all. In fact, I think it can help local business. Because, I don't know this, but the whole retail market in Falls Church needs to be studied, as to just what's missing. There needs to be a gaps analysis. How are the retailers performing? I suspect we would find, as we did 10 or 15 years ago in Alexandria when we did this kind of study, that the local mom-and-pop retailers were barely hanging on. And if the nationals are brought in selectively, carefully, intelligently, it can help the local mom-and-pops by increasing sales.
What kind of retail stops leakage?
By providing goods and services that are now either not available or are so poorly delivered that the residents go outside the city to find the goods and service.
So you're talking about things like clothes? I'm not quite sure what you're talking about. Things that are not in which right? I don't think you know.
Well, of course, there'll be some goods and service that will make no sense to have in Falls Church. A full gaps analysis needs to be performed and evaluated, not just to identify what they are, but also the feasibility of whether they could ever be satisfied in the city.
Thanks for articulating a lot of information I think we pretty much knew. Trying to assimilate all this into a meaningful program that moves...
Well, that's all a consultant is.
I'm one too, so I understand.
Yeah. I mean, we just tell you what you already know.
I'm giving you a compliment.
We tell you what you already know, and then we send you a bill.
Yeah. But to articulate it so that it can be put in print in a proper manner, I think, is very meaningful to a community like ours. I mean, you've indicated three, we only have 325 Class A apartments out of 1,400, and yet you say we have to keep Class A to be beneficial to the city. So, I mean, you articulate problems like that that we can focus on now. Critical mass has been a term that we've heard over and over from many different sources.
I didn't get to answer the second part of that question. I will come back to it, and this is an excellent entree to a critical mass, because we don't have it around the metro stations. But anyway, go ahead with your...
So your feelings on critical mass in Falls Church, how beneficial that is with projects like Mosaic down the street that really don't have immediate housing around, it does have apartments, I know. It seems to be doing quite well. What's your feelings on critical mass in Falls Church before we can begin to uncover our retail potential here?
Falls Church may not be Falls Church anymore if enough critical mass were created in a project. And so Falls Church needs to decide, there's a balance between economic sustainability and quality of life that obviously the community needs to deal with. Economic sustainability can't be the sole objective of the community, but it certainly has to be balanced with quality of life. You could create two mosaics in Falls Church, and I suspect that the quality of life would suffer in the community, but you'd sure accomplish economic sustainability. So just because I'm focused on economic sustainability doesn't mean I'm not sensitive to that issue. But it's for someone else, I think. Since I'm an economic consultant, it's for someone else to be sure that balance is met. Now, let me address the metro station issue. You know, Alexandria is considering a $300 million investment in adding a metro station at Potomac Yard. Metro stations are invaluable, but if you don't have the land use and critical mass around them, or the zoning to accommodate critical mass, or the land uses around the station to accommodate critical mass, they aren't really useful. I think you would agree that we don't have a critical mass around those stations for them to be very useful. Nor could we ever achieve critical mass, given land uses around those stations. Three or four million feet of office space at some distant point in the future, or three or four million of commercial space, of all kinds of space, around a metro station is not a critical mass. So unfortunately, if we, I should say, if we could roll the clock back 35 or 40 years when Metro was doing its planning, and the city was doing its planning, and county were doing its planning, it could have been a different outcome.
So we've got 12 people in the city, people in the city that are stopping, the city's spending. Is there more leakage out in the country?
No. No, it's the other way around. The residents of the city, while they certainly patronize Federal Realty's project here, are spending most of their money outside the city. And while they're, you could never expect they'll spend all their money in the city, there should be a concerted effort to try to capture more of those dollars here.
I understand the point you're making with the gap analysis, in terms of what retail would actually make it sticky, attract people from around the city. Do you have a sense as to a city of this size, given what you're saying about office not being that great, so from a land use standpoint, we're really talking to a larger extent about...
Residential, and maybe more density. What kind of a population would you expect here, maybe comparing to other communities? Are we kind of low-density versus other communities, say, in Arlington or parts of Arlington? Is there some way to make that comparison? So in this two-square miles, we have roughly 12,000 people. What would be a nominable number for us maybe to say would be the right number?
I couldn't say. I think that's a land use issue for a land planner. I'm not sure that I'm qualified to...
Okay. But you think there is an answer to that question as to what would be the right carrying capacity here, given the land use types that are really reasonable for us?
Well, I think that the answer to that is, it would have to come from land use, from transportation, the infrastructure of the community. I think it's, you'd have to answer that running through a series of pretty complex analyses. I don't think it comes from comparing yourself to Arlington. I think it has to be driven specifically from the specifics of the, of Falls Church.
Okay. I thought there might be some similar, you know, area of Falls Church that might sort of look at some sort of a sustainability or stability thing.
But it has to be the product of the infrastructure that we have in Falls Church in terms of transportation, our schools, the land use pattern that we have. I would think all that would bear on the answer to that, as opposed to comparing us to whatever that unique combination is in Arlington.
Okay.
If I could just, thank you, Greg, by the way, for the presentation. If I could just chime in with...
I've never made a presentation without using PowerPoint slides. I've found that that helps people stay awake. I want to thank all of you. I didn't see anyone nodding off.
You were writing so fast.
Just a couple of quick questions, and I think we probably ought to lob it back over for City Council the way in. But the first question, Greg, understanding the office market is down, and probably down for some time, small blips of hope, I think, for, you indicated different ways of working. People are working differently. One blip of hope is a company like WeWork that has co-working environments that are very popular, and they've had a tremendous amount of success in this, in this area as they've entered the market in the past year. Are those types of environments things we should be thinking about here? And also, you had mentioned as a challenge, improving the retail stock. Should the city be thinking about somehow helping to improve the existing office stock that is in the city? Would that be a benefit to us, and to help kind of, you know, anchor what little office market we have in the city, maybe build upon it as the, as the market starts to climb back?
You know, just because I've made comments that the office market is shot through the end of the decade, or maybe longer, doesn't mean that you shouldn't be opportunistic. If, if a build-to-suit opportunity comes along and wants to locate in one of the metro stations, you're certainly not going to turn it down. I would think that you would roll up your sleeves and you'd work with that developer or tenant, and do what you could in order to secure, put in place whatever incentives they needed in order to compete, and try to make that deal. By the same token, we are changing the way we work. Someone was saying they attended Dr. Fuller's, and maybe several of you did, his presentation last Thursday about the economy. There was one thing I found very disappointing about that is, he focuses solely, his job statistics focus solely on W-2 wage earners, and he talked about disappointing job growth last year. If you count, if you use a different measure of employment, we actually grew 80,000 jobs last year. We only grew 20,000 W-2 wage earners, but 60,000 independently-employed individuals, presumably they don't work in office space. Well, where are they working? To your point, they're working in their apartment, in their home, in WeWork, and in other creative places. So of course, we should look at out-of-the-box kinds of developments that combine residential and workplace development, and be creative. Because that's going to be as much a part of the employment base over the next five years as office, or retail, or leisure and hospitality employment is going to be.
Thank you, Mike. Why don't we turn it over to City Council and see if there are any questions on our side of the table? Any questions from City Council folks? Ms. Conley?
My question goes back to your opening remarks when you were talking about Falls Church as being not very business-friendly, but dependent on the commercial sector. Is that, can you just elaborate on that a little bit? And how could we become more friendly?
Well, you're getting it second-hand from me.
Okay.
This is what I hear from our developer clients, some of the tenants that we counsel with that are thinking about making a move, that we help them evaluate different leases. Now, you shouldn't be insulted, because they also think Alexandria... Now, you shouldn't be insulted because they also think Alexandria, Montgomery County, they're crappy places to do business also. But you know what? It'd be nice if they didn't think that way, but they still thought that way about Alexandria and Montgomery County, wouldn't it? So Alexandria, for example, is going through a whole process of trying to indoctrinate whatever staff interfaces with the business community. To train them, to have an attitude of, welcome, we appreciate you being in our community. Generally speaking, that's an unusual approach for a city employee. But that's what they're doing. Of course, you also have to change some administrative procedures. You may have to change some land use regulations. You may have to change a variety of things, not just your greeting when business people come into the city hall.
I would say as someone who has some experience in the business development community, I think perceptions are changing with respect to Falls Church, and I think in a positive way, but I think your point, particularly in the past, is well taken. Are there other questions from Mr. Z?
Thank you. It's, it's always a luck of the draw, but I'm always glad when we have a renowned thinker and analyst that kind of validates what I've been thinking all along anyway, but have been a little bit timid about saying those things, so I'm glad your own way you deliver those conclusions. I've got really just some targeted questions. First of all, do you feel qualified to talk about the influence of Broad Street Route Seven, that highway that runs through the middle of our city? And if so, what kinds of things can we do about that? And second of all, do you see some opportunity areas that are more ripe for intervention than others, Eden Center or down near the West End? Could you talk about some of those things or didn't you have that kind of granularity?
Well, I've studied nothing about Falls Church. I've had experience in other communities that I've made assumptions about Falls Church as a result of my experience in other communities where I've actually done studies. I can make observations on several of the things you've asked me about, only because I've driven down Broad Street as a, as someone who's trying to make their way through the city. It's not pleasant. And I am aware of Eden Center for a variety of reasons, as I think anyone who reads the newspaper would be aware, anyone who's in our industry would be aware of what's going on there. But, you know, those are observations that are really no better than men on the street kind of stuff. I have really not, I haven't studied anything with regard to your community. Maybe someday I'll be retained to do that.
Any other questions from Council? Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Well, I'd say with that, I guess we will say thank you so much for coming today. It's, it was a pleasure to hear your thoughts on the city and our future and what we might do to influence the future and appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you so much.
So we'll transition from that to talking about our downtown business district and investments that we could make there. I will say, as Greg is leaving the table, some of what he said sounded better over lunch when we were at Mad Fox. It's, a lot of it's a pretty tough message and, and there, you know, there are things to learn from it. And, and one thing that I think everybody knows without it being said, that, that we will be looking for those opportunities for, for office, to bring new office development in the city. And we have a potential developer that wants to do just that at four hundred North Washington Street and we'll, we're working with them. And so there are opportunities out there and we pursue them when we see them. And of course, the, the work that we're doing in the, with the steering committee on the George Mason campus study, and we've learned a lot about the potential of that area and, and what the opportunities may be there and we will be pursuing those very aggressively, along with revitalization and reinvestment throughout the city. And so part of that is with thinking about ways that we can use public resources in targeted, strategic, intelligent ways in our business districts to help grow retail, help grow the, the commercial potential for our business districts, help our, our existing businesses succeed and recruit new ones to the city as well. We've had ribbon cuttings this past weekend. We have six new restaurants that are opening in the coming weeks in the city. There is a lot going on in the city and some of these investments all just want to try to help that momentum, continue it and make our business districts as attractive for business as possible. So there's two big pieces of that discussion. I think we'll let Mike go first with the discussion that the EDA has been working on in terms of investment in the public park that's between the Unity Club and Hunan Cafe. And Mike has a presentation on that. And then from there, we'd like to broaden the discussion about our downtown area plan and other ways that we can try to create a better business environment there. So let me tee up the presentation for Mike.
While I was doing that, I just want to take a quick minute and on behalf of the EDA, I just want to thank the mayor and thank City Council for having us here at the work session tonight. It's always a great opportunity for us to be alongside y'all and talk about these very important topics and hopefully there'll be some opportunities in the future to continue these types of discussions. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to return the compliment while we're getting set up. It's a pleasure to work with you all and you have a number of really good ideas. I think we're going to hear some of them tonight. So it's a pleasure to have you all at the table and we'll hope to continue to do this as the weeks and months go forward. Would you mind turning the lights down?
Would it be okay if we turned the lights down so the, this viewer? I have a pointer here. Unfortunately, it doesn't work on the TV, so I'll have to use the pointer on the, on the back screen. Hopefully everyone can, can see it from where you are. And let me see.
Is that on?
The clicker turns on the back and makes sure it's on. Okay, there we go. Okay, great. So, so before I start, I'll just give you a little, little bit of context. This past summer, the EDA had its annual retreat and part of that retreat was going to various sites in the city, including the school property. We took a look at some, the potential development site on West. We went to North Washington and then we ended up downtown, right here where we're going to talk for a few minutes here about this potential plaza site on city-owned land on the hundred block of Broad Street. And after our, at our, our summer retreat, our annual retreat, we talked a lot about how this particular piece of land that is city-owned, right in the heart of our downtown, has such great potential. Maybe there's some low-hanging fruit here to create something real special downtown. And so we, fast forward a little bit, we hired Olin Studios, really wonderful landscape architecture firm out of Philadelphia. They've done some great design work in other jurisdictions locally and across the US and they presented January sixth, some of their ideas for this space as part of a contract that we engaged them on. So, so let me get, I'm basically going to try to recap their presentation and go through in a lot, probably less detail and make it a lot quicker. But I'll, I'll try to hit the highlights of what they presented to us in early January. But I did add a few slides here in the beginning, just to provide some context. This is a map of city-owned property and the area in question is right here on this hundred block. And you see this area here is actually, this represents all of the city-owned land and the area in question is a bit smaller. It's this area between Peleantai and Hunan Cafe. This was really our study area here, although the city land actually continues back a bit farther. I'll go through a few pictures of the actual area in question. It's, I'm sure, very familiar to all of you. This is looking from Broad Street, looking north. This again is from Broad Street. You see, the majority of the area is really taken up by these raised planters. It makes this area rather unusable. The one area that's accessible to pedestrians is really just this pathway that cuts through. And then to the left of it, this is not city-owned property. This is owned by Bill Oshinsky and, who owns all of these retail stores to the left. And then the city property, I believe, starts at the curb. This is a view from the backside of that same area. This is a panoramic, so it kind of stretched things out a little bit, but it gives you an idea. There's some bench seating here and the current parking lot configuration extends back quite a ways. It's a wonderful transformer right in the middle of our, our space that we studied. Unfortunately, I think it carries a hefty price tag to remove, so some of the things we talked about, we're disguising it, painting it, shielding it with different things, perhaps rather than relocating. Here's another shot of the back area. Dogwood Tavern here recently built that really nice deck, bar seating here, some table seating underneath. And then you see the back of the Hunan Cafe, there's some mechanical equipment right there in the back. And then finally a shot of that, that nice seating area that was just built. And the idea is if we can do something with this plaza, being able to actually connect it with this area, I think is kind of interesting to think about. So you really, you can even bring that kind of lively area into the fold, into this potential plaza area. So again, this is the study area. It's almost eleven thousand square feet. If you look at the entire area here, that includes the alleyway and going back all the way almost to the back of the Peleantai building. So I'll really go through these quickly, but these next series of slides, but some of the open space goals that Olin put together, you see here, probably better represented by photos that I'll show in a minute. I will pause on this slide for just one second. This is from the downtown area plan that was adopted by City Council recently. And you'll see the area, the study area that we focused on right here, with the longer-range plan adopted by the city for a downtown pedestrian mall. And one of the things that we thought about as EDA is how do we, how do we build a nice front door to that downtown mall that hopefully we'll be able to get to? And also start with a manageable piece of land and show how it can be successful, show how it can help businesses downtown, get people excited about something that's manageable and, and hopefully lead into something that's, that's bigger and better, quite frankly, that we think could really do wonders for our downtown going forward. So here are those photos that I mentioned that Olin put together. The ideas represented in, in these photos, movable tables and chairs, very flexible for people to go to, you know, downtown to a plaza area and enjoy it. And I will mention, by the way, just my own observation of the downtown area, we have such a lack of seating, quite frankly, it's really hard to go down and lounge around downtown, even if you wanted to. Here's a shot of bringing in, you know, lively sidewalk seating. We think there's potential for this space for that. Water elements, play elements could be incorporated in the space and different activities could be held in this space. We currently have First Fridays that are on the other side of the parking lot. We thought, you know, that's a great event that, you know, if we had a nice plaza space that would make a whole lot of sense to think about having that type of event there, maybe small concerts and so forth. And then we talked about painting murals on the walls of some of the existing, you know, facades down there. And of course, this plaza space is flanked by two very large blank walls that could be a good opportunity. So I'll go through three design options. There are some variations of each of the design options, so, so bear with me with the options, but I, I think you'll get a pretty good sense as we go through, you know, the, the potential for this space. So this is option 1A. This has the alleyway intact. It assumes that that, that remains. And this concept here is more of, I think they described it as more of an urban oasis concept. It's a very elegant concept. You have trees mixed in here, but it's really largely focused on movable tables and chairs. You have private seating here if you wanted to, for the adjacent owners to serve lunch and dinner. And we have this, they have this trellis back here, an arbor with swings hanging off it. And really simple space and, you know, the idea of being able to go down and lounge, if you can imagine, even having city wifi in this space, you know, allowing people to really enjoy it. I think it'd be a pretty wonderful opportunity. Here's a variation where we suggest removing the alleyway. If the city were to be able to work out something with the adjacent owner, perhaps gain control of the space or somehow have some easements over the space, be able to use it. And it really kind of helps to, to stretch out this space a little bit more. This is basically the same concept, only a little wider. Here's a rendering from Broad Street as you're looking in, so you get the idea, you know, these canopy trees are intended to be higher, so you have all this space open below, so it feels like a nice oasis space, but it's really very usable. There, there's not any raised planters where you can't use the space. It's, it's very flexible. And then option 1C, what it does is actually moves that private dining that was located in the center here, puts some, puts it out to the side, either along, again, this is the Peleantai space now and Hunan Cafe. But, so you have two restaurant spaces flanking here that really might be able to capitalize on adding private dining outside. I'm sure you can recall Dogwood Tavern has sidewalk seating over here. It's real pinch point over here. I love, personally love the sidewalk dining here, but this type of space here really lends itself some, with the opportunity of being able to stretch out a little bit more and not encompass too much of the public space while adding some liveliness to this area. So just in purple, this, this is the private seating area. And then this is option 1D, really the same as option 1C, only this private seating is configured more linear up and down. Again, you see the purple area highlighting the private seating. If you had an event in the space, this shows a hundred and fifty people, maybe a little stage here or someone set up playing guitar or a little band, or maybe a movie night, if you can imagine that. Here's a rendering of options 1C and 1D. You see the, the private seating on the sides. See these blank walls too? I mentioned the murals. Just, these could be really good opportunities to really dress up the space for, for really low cost. One of the participants at the EDA session had, had raised the name of a fellow who's local here, who's an artist. I think City Staff's already talking with, or has talked with that person, but, you know, maybe if we can get some local art talent, it'd be really, be pretty fun to be able to do something. Option two, we're starting off again with the alleyway, assuming that remains in place if we're, if we're not able to get access to that alley. And in this case, there's more of an event lawn, small but large enough for, you know, comfortable seating, if you have a little concert event for kids to run around and play. You also have this arbor with swing concept and then movable tables and chairs here with the opportunity for some private dining on the right-hand side. Now if you, option 2B, if you capture the alleyway and can incorporate that into the park, you have private seating on both sides and it really again stretches it out. I think it, I think removing the alley in all of these schemes, you'll, you'll see and I would assume agree that it just, it could make for a better plaza space. It also means no vehicle traffic cutting through. This is just shading showing the private dining. In this case, they're showing again a hundred and fifty people at an event. And here's a rendering from Broad Street. And then option three takes a slightly different approach. Again, this is with the alleyway, but this is more of a semi-circle, more, more kind of set up for an event. I think a lot of the comments we got was that this particular scheme really seemed to work well if you wanted to program the space. if you wanted to program the space. If you can imagine someone set up here, you know, entertaining, or again, movie night or something like that. And these, this semicircle structure here, more steps that can operate both for seating as well as play elements for kids. You could do something back here to encase that transformer or, you know, getting painted or something like that, adding landscaping throughout to really help this, you know, feel a little bit like that urban oasis as well, quite frankly. And here, if you recapture the alleyway, we're showing private seating in this area here as well as private seating here, and flexible tables and chairs that are open, you know, for public use throughout the park. You have public movable tables and chairs up here as well. And then here was option 3C, which really scaled back that lawn area and just created some more hardscape. This is the private seating shown and an event holding 125 people. I'll just mention, as I'm showing the slides with the private seating, we did have some conversations with staff prior to Olin showing these presentations, and I think it was echoed again at the EDA meeting, that we felt like it was an important goal to try to incorporate some private seating, even though it would be public area or public plaza. That private seating, the idea is to really add some liveliness and vibrancy to the space, but also leaving enough of it open and very accessible and the majority of public space, so you didn't feel like you had to buy dinner to enjoy the space, but you felt like you could if you wanted to. And then rendering, rendering here again from Broad Street. So here's a slide showing all of the options together. We can come back to this one as well as the renderings of all four of those options. Or three, I'm sorry, three of those options. Broken up options 1A and 1B and 1C and 1D to call it two options. There's been a lot of, or there were a lot of questions about, hey, are we going to lose parking spaces? You'll see, Olin took a stab at showing how the parking spaces could be reconfigured. If we kept the alleyway, they felt as though we would lose five spaces total in the area. These are public spaces right here. This is, these are spaces owned by the adjacent property owner. So they weren't specific about who was losing the spaces. They just said a net loss of five spaces. You know, my thought is if the private landowners, we really want them to participate. We want them to be partners, and they should, we should probably figure out how to make them whole so they don't lose any spaces, but the city could lose potentially some spaces in this configuration. Interestingly enough, if we remove the alley, it's actually a net loss of four spaces. We are able to pick up one additional space. It's actually better in terms of a net overall space loss by losing or by removing the alley. So I wanted to just hit on a couple of quick slides here at the end. This was not part of the Olin presentation. There was some discussion afterwards about, you know, hey, if we're able to create this great plaza space on Broad Street, you know, one other idea is to have a mid-block crossing at that 100 block of Broad. It is a long block. It's 500 feet from intersection to intersection. You have fast-moving traffic. There are probably, you know, good reasons to try to slow traffic down a little bit and make it more pedestrian-focused, and also there's opportunity to connect the businesses on both sides of Broad. And so this is just one representation. This was not done by Olin. That's why it doesn't look as good. This is my terrible handiwork, but I think you understand the concept of just, you know, creating a crossing. You know, whether you have some median here with some trees, I think would make it look very nice. You don't technically need it. You know, you could just have a crossing here, but I think the more you can do with it, the more you're potentially, you know, creating a more pedestrian feel to it. And then looking straight across from the plaza, it's really interesting. I've never noticed this until actually looking at it, but you very rarely see someone with a right turn lane coming out in your most urban block in the center of downtown. And so, you know, the idea here would be to work with the property owner to really true that up, so it's just a 90-degree entrance and exit. And then you increase your sidewalk space and make it more pedestrian-friendly. But, you know, just when you walk that, it's kind of crazy to me that, you know, you see something like that in a very urban area, but, you know, hopefully we can address stuff like that. So that concludes my presentation. I thank you for your patience and I hope you like the production or the presentation from Olin, quite frankly.
Thank you, Mr. Navatney. We appreciate it. It's a pretty exciting presentation. Before we get to questions, why don't we go ahead and hear from the city manager about some of the ideas that we've discussed previously and that you have, and so we can talk about maybe the grouping in totality?
Let me key up one other.
These are improvements that we might consider for improving, revitalizing the downtown area, drawing new customers, patrons to the area, bringing business back to our downtown, supposing leakage we heard about earlier tonight.
Right. So with the council's direction on the use of water sale proceeds, and that direction was that up to 15% could be used for more immediate investments. And knowing from council discussion that there's a lot of interest in making those immediate-type investments in our business districts, we put together an inventory of needs in the downtown business district, taking queuing off of the downtown area plan. A couple of principles that we've operated under is that anything that we would try to do in the business district has to be geared for a commercial benefit, for a commercial purpose. Any improvements, any pedestrian improvements, they're all geared towards helping the retail be more successful there. And so we've wanted to have this discussion with deep engagement with the business owners there. And to that end, last Friday, we had a meeting at Walter Phillips in which all the business owners and tenants were invited to come. We, and so I want to report on that meeting. We organized areas of investment, really in a focus on the North Washington Street area, the West Broad Street area, and then focused also on lighting improvements in the downtown area. Starting with the North Washington Street area, this area has been identified for many years as a need for better walkability to connect the vibrancy of the State Theater and all the retail, Claire and Dawn's, Argeas, et cetera, that occurs on North Washington Street so that it ties in from a pedestrian context and an access context to the rest of the business district. And so that is what these improvements are generally geared towards. I don't have my clicker here. Mike, can I have one of those back? Let's see if this one will work. Well, the basic ideas would be to improve the sidewalk along these retail frontages here. That may include getting rid of the center median in order to buy some extra width of the sidewalk there. An access point onto Park Place, so you can take a left turn in and have greater access directly to this site. Improved crosswalks here. We also discussed with the business community about having another crosswalk there. Improved lighting along this stretch to replace the old concrete poles with ornamental poles. So that was one area of focus. Another area of focus on the West Broad Street, actually, one thing that I would note with this, actually, I think it's covered here, in terms of West Broad Street improvements, upgrade to the existing lighting, and really that's to break, make the whole district brighter. Have the lights directed in a, down to the ground more effectively than the current lights are. Brighter, more welcoming. New sidewalk brick pavers as needed. Replant the tree pits. Refresh the crosswalks. And other aspects like that. At the intersection of Washington and Broad, we have mix-match, mishmash of signals there because they've been hit by vehicles at various different times in their history and replaced in the most expeditious way possible. That's probably the most expensive of the items under this list, to replace the mast arms for those that are just the sort of iodized aluminum arms that are there. With the business input, one of the points of discussion was to make that intersection more of a place, a more recognizable place with art, with other things that will make people, when they go through the million cars per month, they go through that intersection, to have them recognize where they are and pull them in. Barbara Cram's efforts to get the Love statue there was perfectly aligned with that thinking. Obviously, it was temporary. But that space in particular, in front of Atlantic's property, is really well-suited for a highly visible sculpture, artwork, or some sort of a feature that could create a sense of place there. The LED streetlight conversion throughout the downtown area, we estimate that that would cost about $150,000 if that was one big project, basically all the lights in the downtown district could be replaced. Yes?
You're referring to streetlights, and I get confused often when we talk about lights. Traffic lights or streetlights?
I'm talking about streetlights that illuminate the street, not signals.
Okay.
So when we're talking about--
When you say "streetlights," do you mean that--
We call those "traffic signals."
Okay. Thank you.
So those were some initial groupings of things that are needed. The park improvements that the EDA is taking the lead on, and every walking tour and in our downtown area planning, that was identified as a focal point for the downtown district in an area that right now, because of its landscaping and the way it looks, is a net negative for the district and very much needs to be improved. I won't go through all of the comments that we received, but in the, at the end of the comments, a couple of sort of high-level comments that we did gather, that there was interest in pursuing the physical and aesthetic improvements to the Broad and Washington intersection, improved crosswalks at Park and Washington, improved crosswalks throughout the district, better lighting for pedestrians and for the traffic that's passing through to make them stop, see it as a welcoming place, better pedestrian amenities and bike facilities, improved directional signing, pointing people towards parking, pointing people towards key things that will, that people would want to stop for. Public art, and then festival and special activity space built into or closer to the central downtown area. And that queued back to the discussion about moving the farmer's market to the downtown area and the investments that we would need in order to make that happen, as well as the park space. Eric Pelton was at the meeting representing the EDA, as were a number of members of the City Council, the mayor, Mr. Duncan. And so you all haven't fully captured the whole spirit of the discussion, but I think it was a good, full discussion with some good input. And really, that was just a start, because we want to continue the engagement as we're developing the budget and the CIP for adoption. And these are all ideas of things that we would try to move on quickly and get going on over the summer with the council's approval. Once we've, once we've sort of vetted them, prioritized them, we want them to be things that we can move on quickly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. With that, why don't we go ahead and turn it over to the EDA for questions, comments, feedback? Mr. Navatney?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, again, I'll turn to my colleagues here on EDA if anyone would like to start with comments or questions.
Well, what's really exciting about this is what we're talking about, investing in our downtown area, which hasn't been invested in in many years. Matter of fact, if I remember correctly, that little mini-park was the only investment made, and that was, I think, in the 60s when that was made. So to have this evolve to all of these ideas that we're presenting today, I think, is just fabulous. We've got a, I think the downtown business district in particular, from what I perceive, is looking for a little city leadership and getting something going down there so that they can in turn take their turn to make their investments, such as the plaza area, the seating area for the restaurants, cleaning up that smoking area that's out there now that nobody wants to go to. There's just so many little things like that that can't be done with this minimal amount of money that I'm very excited about this whole conversation. Thank you.
Well, if you're kind of looking for opinions on those kinds of efforts, I mean, in a lot of ways, there are beautification efforts for the downtown, but the downtown is kind of shabby in a lot of areas. And investments in infrastructure that are permanent investments, like widening the sidewalks and some of the other things that are in this, but even the LED lights, I think, are good investments. Anything that demarks the center part of town and makes it look kind of higher-end and a real downtown area, kind of a magnet, I think, makes a lot of sense. And it doesn't sound like it's a whole lot of money in terms of the investment overall. Probably will have a payoff. It's more beautification than it is an investment in economic development, so I'd say it's going to have some, more of an aesthetic return maybe than an economic return overall. The area that the EDA focused on, I thought, I think is really kind of interesting. And I was against the study, by the way. I didn't think it was a really good use of our funds. But as it turns out, I think they came up with some ideas and a vision here that has a lot of leverage potential. And if we were to go ahead and do something like that, I think that is an investment in economic development, but only if it's part of a bigger plan and we're actually, that's the first step in developing an area there which does become a downtown walkable district overall. From the standpoint of that investment, to do that, we're then to get the business owners, the landowners to want to come together around that kind of a thing and then, you know, make a decision that this is real economic value. If they, if we can bring a developer and they can do it, then I think it's a great investment. If we only make the investment, it's kind of nice, but it's really nice if it's part of that bigger plan and Oshinsky and a lot of others see that as a real advantage to them. So there's my short speech.
I would just echo the both comments from Barry and Ed. In the list that's been compiled by staff, I think it's, I think it's great. I don't see any bad ideas on this list at all. I think all of them collectively, if they add up to a more pedestrian-friendly downtown, it's going to be, I think it's going to be money well spent to Ed's comments specifically. You know, some of the infrastructure improvements, widening the sidewalks, you know, lasting improvements that will really, you know, make the center of our downtown better. Again, more pedestrian-friendly. I think we're probably going to get, you know, more bang for our buck there. I walked that area quite a bit, live a couple of blocks from there. Just one example, Maple, North Maple and Broad Street, right at the corner of Doodle Hoppers, that sidewalk at the corner, I think is probably three and a half feet at the corner. It's dangerous, especially if you have a stroller with kids, you have a dog, you're walking. Making that sidewalk a little bit wider and have a little bump out for pedestrians, just making it a little safer, I think is going to help immensely to making people just want to be downtown versus, you know, taking their lives into their own hands if they go to cross that street a little too quick. So those little things matter, and I'm really happy to see the list. And I do want to comment on the plaza space, of course, that I think, and we've all discussed this amongst EDA, and we had a lot of positive reception from those in attendance at our meeting. I truly believe this could be a very big spark to the downtown. We don't have areas downtown where we can sit, relax, kind of enjoy our surroundings. It's really, right now, very suburban-oriented. You drive there in your car unless you live close. You get out of your car, you go into the back door of one of the stores, and then you leave. you leave. Having a place where people actually want to go and stay, I think it'd be a very meaningful thing for our downtown, and I think it'll help our businesses. And I think it'll help us attract new retailers as well, that may want to locate in the city and may want to locate in the downtown. I, I think overall, it could be a rising tide. So I, I would echo the, the previous comments that it ought to be done together. I think the plaza space is critically important for the downtown, but all of these things on the list are also extremely important. I hope that we can deploy all of it, quite frankly, we can figure out a way to do that. And, and we, we do think, and I don't, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the EDA, I think collectively, we feel like the downtown mall is really the longer-term vision that is the most meaningful. And if we can start to get people excited about that block or those couple of blocks of downtown and ultimately move towards that down the road, I think it'd be a really, really huge win for the city and for the retail. And it's interesting coming on the heels of the comments from Delta Associates Consulting, that we really need to be, you know, kind of investing in our retail, and this is, this is the perfect opportunity to start that.
Thank you. Do you have additional comment, Mr. Pelton?
Just briefly. First, I'll, I'll note for the record, I think everybody knows I have multiple potential conflicts of interest in the area, but I, I think that you'll, you'll see my comments are general. I think why I did a great job of summarizing the meeting with businesses that was held, there was really strong support for a theme that overrides the three major things here. And I think that is, the, the theme is making it more comfortable and enjoyable for people to come and linger in this area. And the three tangible things that we've talked about, really, that came about from that meeting and from the park are the park idea, the pedestrian improvements, and the lighting improvements. And all of those feed into making it more comfortable and enjoyable for people to come and linger in that area. And while that is aesthetic, it is absolutely economic and business, because the more people that come and the more people that linger and the more people that spend money, the more money that the city gets and the more that, more incentive business owners will have to improve and the higher rents will get, and hopefully, it will spark many other things.
Thank you very much. Why don't we go ahead and turn it over to city council and see if we have any comments on our side of the table? I want to go Mr. Zee and then Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what I heard from the EDA, and I agree with it, is that we should spend money on the projects that have the highest impact. So if you were expecting me to go right to LED lighting, I'm not going to go there. I think, again, the things that we need to spend our money on are the things with the highest impact. And I would advocate for just picking a small piece of all the possibilities here and just doing that, perhaps just a stretch that we're all most familiar with, the ones that we think people will see right away, and, and that would be that stretch from North Washington, from State Theater on down, and you turn the corner on Broad, you, you make that a nice corner. It's a, that is a crossroads of the city after all. And so I, I would say that the danger that we would face would be to, to go for the things that are the, the cheaper solutions. And so we really want to improve, I think, the aspects of the infrastructure that allow us in the future to, to, to have more appliances that take advantage of either fiber optic or, or electrical, the widening sidewalks. I'm a little bit disappointed, I didn't see any mention of bike racks here, so...
Meeting, and it made it on to the list of additional items.
You're not going to steal my thunder, Mayor. I'm disappointed to see that there's no mention of bike racks here, but I'm sure they'll make it into the final. And it's something the city can do that without, without having to gauge all the, all the landowners, and, and so we would have more dominion over that. And that's kind of it. I think that, um, it goes to the point that was made, that if we do this and do this right, and more than just beautification, it actually has utility. The danger of not doing enough is that if we go forward with, with putting the park, the plaza, into the, into the CIP, and we don't address the crossings and its relationship to all the surrounding landowners, then I think that we haven't done enough. And I just also have to say that, I'm a big admirer of the work of Olin. They did the High Line in, in New York City, and they took an abandoned stretch of elevated highway and with some seed money from the city and, and the cooperation of all the landowners, they turned that into a vast, beautiful urban park. So, you know, it started somewhere, and we could probably do something similar with what doesn't look like a very useful strip of land, but we can make a something. Just thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the EDA for their initiative in this area and the discussion with the business community. I think that it's long overdue and it's very, very positive, some of the ideas that have come out of it. I, I do want us to focus on objectives, though, what, what certain things we'll achieve and what they hope we will achieve. I recall, and I got on city council right at the end of when we were doing the streetscape, the current Broad Street streetscape, and the notion then was, well, if we do all this, it'll bring a lot of businesses. Well, it didn't do that. It may have made an attractive streetscape, but it didn't bring a lot of new businesses. So my, I would be particularly interested for the city to invest not only in providing better service for existing businesses, but truly use that for bottom-line leverage for the business community to say, okay, what, if we do this investment, what are you going to do? What are, are we going to do in terms of the existing businesses, and then in terms of the landowners committing to partnering with the city for significant new, new development of the kind that a consultant just indicated that, that we needed? So I come at this both with a great deal of support, but in a way, it, 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 it really is missing. If, if the objective is, we're going to, this is going to spark a lot of new economic activity, I don't really see that in the absence of the private sector. I work in the private sector, so I want us as, I want us not to do something and hope that we'll get a reaction and, and, and a meeting from the private sector, but I want to see what the private sector is going to do. If we do this, what will you do? I'll be very interested to see that as we go along. And I made that comment, I think, at the EDA meeting, and I think there was a lot of agreement for that. The second thing that I'm missing is any kind of a wow factor, any sort of a coherent identity. If we're going to do these little bits and pieces, we ought to know. It's like when you get in your car. When you get in your car, you, you know where you're going ultimately. There may be different ways to get there, but you know where you want to go. And I see this as adding bits and pieces, certainly needed, not objectionable for sure, but aren't going to produce a major hit in economic development without the leverage that I've talked about, without some sort of a vision of where we're going to be going. And I do associate my, myself with the comments that Ed Salzberg made a few minutes ago in many of these same areas. So those are a couple of the comments. I walked that area quite a lot, and, and a couple additional points I'd make, which are, are not addressed. There's a huge amount of surface parking, and it, it's just, it's a ridiculous amount of surface parking that, that isn't functional in terms of generating activity. And we need an option, an alternative to that, to be able to develop much more of that and provide structured parking. And so I, I like all of these ideas, but I'm going to be a little bit skeptical about their ability to produce the kind of economic development that the community needs in that area without the private sector coming forward and saying, okay, this is what we'd like you to do, but this is what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Ms. Oliver, then Mr. Duncan?
So when Mr. Leish was speaking at the very beginning, he talked about the fact that he was focused on economic development and what you needed to do in order to, to generate money to help support the city. And he said, and of course, there's that whole other set of considerations on quality of life, but that's somebody else's focus. Well, when I think about those two things together, I think about place-making. I think about the idea of having a place that you put something, that you create a reason for there to be economic development, and part of the way that you do that is by making it attractive for people to be there. And Mr. Shields, when I look at the proposals that the city has come up with, they're all very useful, very helpful, but they don't make a place anywhere. They don't create a focus. They're, they're very, very scattered. I didn't myself actually see what the price tag was on the park. Is there an estimate?
We don't have a, an estimate for the park yet, and, and so that's something that we'll need to develop. And, and I'll follow up with the chairman on how best to do that.
Is it in the magnitude of the other proposals that are here for the table? Is it a lot larger?
In terms of a working number, we don't have one yet. Mike, do you have one?
We got a ballpark figure there.
So if, if I made, in the scope with Olin, so they're an excellent landscape architect. They, they're not a construction pricing firm, though, and they were hesitant to provide numbers, because it's really not their expertise. What we would do, or need to do as the next step, is to take the concepts and talk with contractors and get concept pricing from them in order to have a real good idea. Part of the direction we gave to Olin was to try to not overdo it so as to make this space unaffordable. We'll only know if that was achieved, really, by the end, after we have a final design and we have, after we have bids from a contractor, and we decide at that point, you know, if we can afford all the elements that are in there or if it needs to be value-engineered. I'm sorry, I don't have a more specific answer, but there, there are steps we can take going forward to try to at least capture the concept pricing. And then after that, if city council wants to move forward, we do a final design and then do a final bid with a contractor, and then you know at that point really what you, what you're going to pay for.
I guess the main point that I was trying to get at is that I, I think that if we're going to make improvements, they, they need a focus, they need a place, they need a starting point, and the park is potentially one of them, because it's at the entrance to that downtown mall. And there are crossing improvements, pedestrian improvements that can be made in that area to complement that and start to create a focus. And, and my hope would be that then, you know, development could move outward from that, hopefully, in the directions that we would want it to go. And I would just like to have a sense for what that would cost.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the EDA for coming and joining us tonight, and, and the staff for putting together the materials that we're looking at, and the business community for its involvement in the meeting last Friday and at other times. I'm trying to focus my thoughts, because we're only, I think, about 100 days away from passing the budget for next year, on the half million dollars that are identified in the staff materials. And I'd like to be helpful in giving my thoughts to prioritize how we would spend a half million dollars. Some of this is going to repeat, I think, what's been said by others, so I'll try to skip over that part. But my first focus would be on safety. As Mr. Navatney said, there's one particular corner in the downtown area, which is right next to a kid's toy store, which is just a substandard by any measure and not safe. And I think that's something that ought to be a focus of pretty immediate attention. I, I would put a close second to the intersection around the State Theater as you drive through town on the weekends or any night when there are functions at the State Theater. There, you know, a lot of folks who are standing around, milling around, waiting in line, and that, that area just doesn't, doesn't feel as pedestrian and safe as I feel like it should. And so if there were enhanced crosswalks, brick pavers, better lighting, something that really delineated that as, you know, a place in the city of Falls Church where, you know, we invite and expect people to be standing, I think that would be a good use of our money. The aesthetics investments that, that Mr. Salzberg referred to, I, I hear what he's saying. I guess I would focus our investment in aesthetic items on the things that really make us look rinky-dank. You know, we don't, we don't want to look rinky-dank. We, we want to have consistency in our light poles and, you know, we want to have planters that don't have dead plants in them. And, you know, there are just certain things that, that, some of them cost some money, some of them don't cost so much money, that convey a, a sort of haphazardness that I think we want to try to strike a blow against with this half million dollars that we're going to spend. The other items in the aesthetic category, what Mr. Snyder says is, is correct, I think. It's really hard, and Mr. Salzberg too, it's hard to, you know, quantify what are we really getting out of some of those. And yet, still, some of them, you know, plantings in the planter beds and certain other things that I, I think have, have, there's a perception in the public that they've been neglected for a while, and so it would be a worthwhile expense, I think, for us to, to sort of stake a claim that, you know, yeah, we have some water proceeds money and we are unapologetically going to spend it on some things that could be construed as aesthetic, but nonetheless, you know, create an impression that we do care about our downtown. Because that sort of expression of concern, hopefully, hopefully, and that is a, that is a hope, will begin to leverage investment by the private sector. But getting that investment is critical and needs to be occurring in tandem with the spending of this money, you know, with key players like Atlantic and Oshinsky and the new property owner in the first block of Broad Street. I mean, every, every meeting that we hold needs to include a representative from those key downtown property owners. And if they are not there, then I think by definition, it's not a successful meeting. That's sort of a hard thing to say, because they feel like they go to plenty of meetings, but we really need them in the room, understanding that we're spending time and effort. And we need some tangible indications from them, and they're going to do same. I mean, Dogwood's back porch, it's a great, we need to be able to show the public that the private sector is investing. And whether it's, you know, David and Rebecca at Clarion Don's, or it's the back porch at Dogwood, or it's, you know, whatever Mr. Brown might do with his hardware store to make it look, you know, like the icon that we all know that it is, I think we should encourage that. And finally, the last thought, I, I personally would, would have more hope that we would, would create a vibe with the mall concept that, that Mike has talked about, back behind the current buildings. And so anything that we spend now that would encourage that to become, you know, the funky town district, I think, would be helpful. I, I just don't know whether it's ever going to be appealing to sit at a cafe table on Broad Street or to have a, you know, musical performance near Broad Street. I mean, I try to sit outside at Four Provinces sometimes when the weather's nice, and it's just not getting around. There's a lot of trucks, buses, traffic. It is not a Parisian café vibe that, that we have here. And that maybe someday we will, maybe if we slow the traffic down, you know, it'll be less intrusive, but right now, it's just pretty intrusive. I have more hope that, you know, the new restaurant that'll move into the Plain Spot might orient itself somehow back the way that Dogwood has oriented itself back. I think you want to have enough stuff on the main street in the front to have people driving by say, oh, that, they've got outside dining. And then when they go, they actually don't sit in those tables, they go in the back where it's nice and quiet. That's the sort of, you know, sleight of hand, I guess, almost, that you want to create. So anything the city can do to consolidate the parking, which is, Vice Mayor Snyder says, is just, you know, preposterous, preposterously jumbled back there, would be a good investment. And so if we could, you know, create some perception that there is other parking when we eliminate some spots back there in what we want to be the pedestrian mall, I think that would be a good expense, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. We need to keep, keep the pace going, so just keep that in mind as we get to our next comments. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. So just a couple of observations and thoughts. I think one of the things that I was looking for, for the water, water sale proceeds or this portion of it, was something that would create economic incentives and economic revitalization to certain areas of the city. So... So I think what the EDC has kind of proposed is one option, even though it's missing a key factor, that being, what's the price tag? But I understand that, why we don't have that information. I think it's a concept worth exploring. It's not to diminish some of the staff recommendations. I think those are very important, but I wasn't envisioning things like LED lights, as Mr. Zee mentioned, is kind of what would be encompassing here. I think that should be routine maintenance, things like that, that should actually be part of the budget process. But for this money, I was thinking of sort of seed money to doing something kind of bigger and greater, if you will. And I think this park concept needs to be tested out a little bit. And what I mean by that is, I think that the price tag for it is going to be larger than, you know, what we may originally envision, and that doesn't necessarily, you know, counsel for not doing it. But what I do think it counsels for is, I think we have a possibility of putting some skin in the game from the city and public standpoint. And we should talk to the business owners now to see if this is the type of skin that they'd like to see in the game, to see if they're willing to take on their own money, and also looking at concepts of, you know, how do we revitalize our businesses possibly moving towards the concept of having the back alley, if you will, concept that we've heard and talked about? Will that help them start looking in that direction? So I think that's going to be, this is an inroads to have that conversation, if council's there to start thinking about utilizing this money towards the park, is talking to our private landowners and seeing if they're willing to put some skin in the game if we're going to be doing this type of infrastructure building. But what I don't want to see happen is that we put skin in the game and it doesn't advance the ball. In my view, this could really advance the ball, but I don't want to be sort of council quarterbacking this and not talking to the rest of the players in this, and pushing the ball and finding out that there's no troops back there. I don't think that would, that would be helpful. And also, as part of this plan, I know that we didn't get into it, and I don't want to belabor it, I want to make sure whatever concept we start putting out there is the concept that keeps the back alley sort of gateway as part of it, or can be done, understanding that that may incur additional costs to try to do, whether it's an archway or some entrance, that that's going to up the cost. And I know that the direction that the consultant was given is, you know, cost constrained. Thank you.
Scotty Lee?
I just have, everyone has sort of covered what I wanted to say, but one of the things that I haven't heard anyone say tonight is, could this money be the seed money for a business improvement district? Where we're saying, we're going to put in this much and make it, not just skin in the game, but what's the official responsibility then of that neighborhood if the city's going to make those? And I have no idea how a bid works, or how that could fit into what we're doing, but I think that could be an interesting next step to continue those improvements and to see, make them economically viable.
I think that's a great idea.
And then the other part of it is, I appreciate all that staff put into this, and I know these are definitely things that need to be done, and I would support them. One of them that I think is really important is the maintenance part that comes after the plants. There's mention there of money that Vipas had given to fill those planters, that there was not money to then maintain the plants, and they all died, and now they look awful. So if we were to invest this money into planters and other things in that area, we should be able to maintain that, and then that would have to become an operating expense.
I think it probably was a lack of sunlight. I think the plantings that were put there just struggled there.
Were the wrong plants.
And so I think that's one of the takeaways from that.
So that would be part of my recommendation, then, is that if we indeed do plantings or flower baskets or other things that we're aware of, the maintenance required to keep it looking good.
Okay, maybe I've got a few comments if I could. Juan, I'd like to echo the comments about leveraging the private part of this, and I think that's a critical element, that we get the private sector involved. And I think staff has reached out already to some of these neighboring property owners, both directly and as a group. Chamber of Commerce will be coming here in about two weeks to be doing the same thing we're doing tonight, a work session with them, to get further input from the businesses in the city, in particular in the downtown area. But it's certainly a critical element. From my perspective, I want to see the maximum bang for the buck. You know, we really, we have a limited amount of money to spend, and there's a lot to do. And so that's sort of one of the key driving factors for me, is how much return on investment do we get for any dollar we might spend? I think a critical element of this that's been mentioned as well is creating a better sense of place. Remember, Harris Teeter is going to come into this area in another year, and we're going to have, you know, thousands of people, I don't know, on a weekly basis or whatever the turnover is going to be, coming to that immediate area to buy groceries. They could very easily be drawn across the street to go to a restaurant or to do other things. We're also going to have probably 500 people living in a building across the street as well that weren't there before. So to me, this is kind of synergistic, and we want to take advantage of new things happening. We've got just down the street the Fresh Market going in as well, and I think creating some excitement in this area is critical. Last, I would just say, this is the beginning of a discussion, it's not the end of it. So it's, we've got a ways to go. You know, the city manager focused on the staff's proposal. There were a number of comments that were made as well that really didn't get as much discussion tonight. We heard about bike racks, those were discussed. Bike share was also discussed. Welcome signs into the city to let people know you're in the city, that it's a sense of place were discussed. Benches, cleaning up Park Avenue. A lot of things are on the table, and so really I think this is the beginning of the discussion, but it's an important discussion to be had. And so I guess I would just leave it with, I thank you all for all the time that you put into this, and thank you for the EDA for your work on the park, which is a continuing dialogue, and for coming out tonight. So with that, why don't we end this item and take a five-minute break, and then reconvene with the council-only work session?
Can we just leave, as we're leaving, just as one graphic at the intersection of North Washington and Park, as one of the areas, you know, as a priority for investment. Some initial sketches of what that could look like, but I did want to just point out the changes of the lights, the improved pedestrian access, and the multiple bike racks that are there so people can ride to the State Theater. But there's, you know, a lot of this conceptual work, that's where we are right now, is trying to help oxygenate people's thinking and get the best input into this deliberative process for these investments.
Just, since you focused on that, let me try to refine a point that I think a bunch
of us are making, and I could be wrong, but I think we're all sort of making the point. Would be interesting to go to the State Theater owner and say, okay, if we did this, what would you do with that sea of asphalt you have alongside of it? Or to Clarion Don's, you know, how about if, on big nights, we actually closed that street off and let you expand your restaurant into the street or hold festivals there? Is that something you're willing to do? Or the park, if we do the park, and the park is a great idea, and it talked about private seating, would the landowners on both sides of the park actually want that and serve it and expand their businesses to occupy that space? That's the example of how a synergistic moving forward, if we do this, and we're, I think we're willing to take some risk here, what risk are you willing to take? And I don't mean that in a negative sense. It came across, I was concerned it came across as negative. It's really, we want to do this, what can you do to help actually make this a real success? That's the point.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Sure.
Your walking tour that you led back in the summer prior to the downtown plan, a lot of this worked, we did a PowerPoint looking, kind of taking that same path and looking at where are the deficiencies? And it's pretty clear there are a lot of deficiencies, so we've got these recorded in a PowerPoint, and then looking to try to fix those. But Mr. Snyder's, Vice Mayor Snyder's point about the amount of asphalt devoted to parking, we've done a really good job of having a lot of parking, but we're still concerned about parking. That's the number-one topic we hear. So at some point, you know, we're going to have to find a way to have garages or get more use out of garages that are present, such as Kaiser, or opportunities where we have our own public parking lot to leverage that into more garage space, so we can allow those asphalt parking areas to become buildings and businesses that still have adequate parking and pedestrian accessibility of that parking nearby. So this is a, I think this is a first step in a beginning of a multi-year effort to build this area as a real attractor for the city, that hopefully will be a focal point around which other more dense development can occur. Because you have to have a reason to come to Falls Church, and part of the notion here is that things like the State Theater and Clarion Don's and the unique businesses, some of which don't have any parking of their own, but are here nonetheless and do well, they're one of the reasons that we are unique. And I think, you know, trying to promote, enhance, retain, and expand those is a really important objective and part of this.
If I can just have one last thing, and I'll be real brief, but one key thing, as was just stated, is the engagement with the business community in this discussion. It has to be a joint effort. And the mayor is reaching out to the property owners, the EDA members are reaching out, we're reaching out, we're all working together to try to make sure that engagement happens. And I think it's critical to the success of the program.
Okay, great, thanks. Let's take a five-minute break and reconvene. Thank you all. Okay, if we can, why don't we go ahead and reconvene? If you all could sit down, so I'm not the only person seated here. Could somebody else other than me sit down and be prepared to continue the meeting? Yeah, exactly. If you all could please sit down, and we'll continue, sit down, and we'll continue the meeting, so we can get out of here at a decent hour. All right, let's go ahead and get started. For the folks out in the hallway, I'm talking to you, Karen and Nader. Come on in if you could, join us. Anyway, thank you all for sticking around. If we can, go ahead and get started with the next item on the agenda. I believe we have a quorum of folks in the room. We do indeed, at least on City Council's side, so... Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and call the next item?
The council received some months ago an initial briefing on the update to the city's comprehensive plan with respect to parks, open space, and recreation, and we have gone through an extensive public input process. The Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board has recommended, has taken action on this draft chapter to the comp plan, and the Planning Commission has informally approved it, and I think they are formally planning to vote on their recommendation.
February 2nd.
On February 2nd. And so we wanted to brief council on its content, and Paul Stoddard will do that with a number of slides here that were in your packet.
All right. Thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council. I do want to point out some folks who are also at the table. Danny Schlitt, Director of Recreation and Parks, and also Steve Selby, who is the Chair of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. Recreation and Parks, for each of the chapters, we have sort of a point board and commission in addition to the Planning Commission that helps us track this, track the update and make sure we're going in the right direction. And for this update, it's been Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. And just to put this presentation in context, so we're here in a work session tonight, and if all goes well tonight, what we're looking to have happen is Planning Commission take their final action on this draft chapter February 2nd, and for council to take its final action on February 9. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started on the presentation. I like to start all of my presentations with a motivation slide, let people know why we're looking at parks in the first place. And parks have a lot of benefits, and I think we were talking about them some tonight already, so I'll start at the bottom of the slide, actually, in economic benefits. That parks do a lot of things for communities, that they can be things that attract people to the city, and then they spend a little more time, and they go to a restaurant, they go to a shop, they go to a show. Or they can also have sort of commercial labor incentives, that people want to work in nice places. And so in turn, businesses know that they have to locate in places where people want to be. And so if you look at where companies are trying to focus today, they're looking for those communities that are doing placemaking, like Councilmember Oliver said, they're looking for nice places to locate. That's what attracts people. Parks also have the traditional benefits that people think about, social benefits, exercise benefits, and they have environmental benefits. This can be where wildlife habitat is provided, this is where stormwater quality, stormwater quantity can be handled to some extent, and it's where a lot of tree canopy can be, and so you do a lot of air quality work there as well. So within this presentation tonight, I started by motivating the parks as sort of in general. I'll talk a little bit about what a comprehensive plan is, just so we put this chapter in context of what it's trying to do. Then I'll talk about the planning process that was used by staff to get the draft to this point. I'll talk a little bit about what's in the plan itself in terms of the future park system for the city, and then implementation priorities to realize that vision, and then I'd like to open it up to council to get feedback. So first, talking just a little bit about what the comprehensive plan is. So the comprehensive plan is a guide for development of the city, and that means it's a guide both for the private side as well as for the public side. On the private side, certainly it speaks to things that we know about, sort of the shapes of buildings, the types of uses that go in there, but it also talks on the public side in terms of what's most important in terms of affordable housing goals, parks goals, facility goals. And so it's used as a budgeting tool, as a timeline tool, to identify the projects that the community is trying to invest in, and what order it wants to invest in them. And so each chapter, then, is specialized on some particular topic. And so for each topic, there's a vision statement, a set of goals that go along with it, and then there's some analysis that goes into it in terms of what are the existing features that the city has, what's missing in terms of realizing the vision that's been laid out, and then what are the strategic opportunities available to get that implemented? And so each chapter goes, includes a set of policies and projects that need to be accomplished or achieved or built, and then a timeframe for doing those things. So switching gears, then, to the planning process that was used to get the draft to the state that it's in today. So the kickoff for the planning effort happened in June of 2014, last year, with work sessions with council, Planning Commission, Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board. And then that launched into a very wide brainstorming session, where staff went out and talked to every board and commission that would have a stake in this. We talked to civic groups, we talked to the community, to get a list of all the ideas people were interested in terms of a park system. And then staff turned around and tried to prioritize that giant list of things. So staff used a web survey, there were over 400 responses to that. We talked to the Planning Commission, we talked again to the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board, we went out to a community meeting, and now here we are tonight, staff talking to city council. And assuming this is all in line, we'll begin the adoption process then in February. So then the contents of the plan. The vision that tries to, the vision that staff tried to impart in this draft chapter was to take what the city already has in terms of all the components of a park system and turn those into a full-fledged connected system, where each park serves a different role, but the entire thing is a connected whole that runs and courses through the city. It introduces green to all the city neighborhoods. And so the draft vision statement that goes along with that, and I'll read it out because it's quote, "Build upon existing parks within the city to develop a well-maintained, safe, and connected park, open space, and recreation system that provides a range of amenities, enhances natural ecosystems through the use of green infrastructure, and contributes to a sense of place by enhancing and relating to adjacent land uses." And so there are a lot of goals, then, that can be broken out of that vision statement. Those goals include maintaining the existing parks that are there today, and then acquiring new space to open up new access, to get more space for recreational facilities, enhancing and increasing recreational programs that are in use today, taking more advantage of green infrastructure. So relying less on gray infrastructure and more on green infrastructure, which over the long term can actually be cost-effective. And then some elements about design. So certainly there are concerns about safety, visibility, lighting within the parks, but also design. Make sure that when parks are designed, they relate to the land uses around them, that parks are sort of special in that everyone wants to have one next to them. And so it's something that can be used to relate and buffer to sort of land uses that might seem incongruous, where you've got denser development and lower density development. A park in between those two things can relate to both of them. So within this park system that has all these different components, each park would serve one or more of these sort of different needs. And so often when people think of parks, they think of these traditional uses, so these active playing sites, rectangular fields, soccer fields. But they can also be placemaking, that was a big topic already tonight. Parks that serve a placemaking role, where even the sort of street section that's shown on the right, it's seating, it's trees, it's benches, it's a place where people can be. Parks is infrastructure, talking about green infrastructure, the transportation ways can be tree-lined streets, or they can be tree-lined paths or stream corridors. It can be green infrastructure in the way a stream bed is utilized where it wasn't before. And then within all of these different parks, you'd have different recreation facilities, whether it's big-ticket items like a swimming facility or indoor fields that are available all year round, or it's outdoor parks that just allow people to get more use out of the existing space, whether it's a community garden or a dog park. And so all those things that I was just talking about there, that's sort of the large list sort of grab-bag ideas that we, that staff gathered during the brainstorming effort. And so the trick, then, is... And so the trick then is using the vision statement, using that list of ideas to begin with what the city has today, it's in existing parks, and develop a vision for a future park system. And I'll flip the slides back and forth a couple times here. But here's the existing park system that's envisioned in the plan, and so you can see a lot of it is focused on providing more access to the parks that were already there, increasing connections among parks into other areas of the city, and then providing amenities where they're needed within those parks. So I'll jump back, and you'll see the existing parks that people know today, and then again, filling in the gaps. So some of this is taking advantage of the streetscape and then completing it on streets like Broad Street and Washington Street, providing that same sort of feel in Park Avenue and Maple Avenue, taking advantage of stream corridors, trips run and four-mile run, and then completing the plaza projects, the placemaking projects that are already envisioned in the city's small area plans, whether that's plazas in downtown area, the North Washington Street area, the South Washington Street area. This is a way to bring the green into the entire city. So then implementation. There's a vision statement for the parks, there's a list of features to add, there's a map for what it should look like, but there's got to be a set of policy, a specific set of policy actions and projects that the city can undertake to realize it. So some of them are funding-related, whether it's getting a stable stream of funding, and maybe that includes developer contributions, or it's follow-up planning efforts, deciding what should be park maintenance standards. Updating the land use map and identifying what are the priority properties to acquire if the city wants to realize this vision. And then cultivating partnerships. Already the city partners, the sort of city hall and the city schools already partner on use of facilities, so that's something that could be reaffirmed. Further developing the adopt-a-spot groups that are active throughout the city into full-fledged Friends of the Parks groups, and then working more frequently with Fairfax County as the city already does with Larry Graves Park, and reaching out to Arlington County as well. So some of those things are policies, and then there are also projects that go along with it, whether they're features within parks, like enhancements to the WNOD trail, or implementation of the city's park master plans, or whether it's sort of new, big-ticket facilities that people brought up throughout the planning effort, artificial turf fields, swimming facility, indoor fields, even the idea of an ice rink came up. So with those policies and projects in mind, it's important to prioritize those things. Things like an ice rink, some people may want them, but do enough people want them to make that a priority? I bring that up as an example because I'm pretty confident the answer is no on that one. But the other ones, the answers are often more mixed, and we'll see that as we go forward. So as I mentioned, staff went out with a web survey, we got over 400 responses, and if you look at this list of what was the highest priority, you can see some sort of rise to the top. Paths and trails, enhancing trees, benches, and then the dot-dot-dot is other street furniture along city streets, enhancing the WNOD right-of-way, a swimming facility. Those were at the top of the web survey. But staff didn't go out just to the public, we also went out to the boards and commissions, and we held community meetings. And you can see there are particular items, like a swimming facility that's highlighted in the first red box. It was a high priority in the survey, but it was not a high priority amongst the boards and commissions. Similarly, implement the updated park master plans, not a high priority in the survey, but it was an extremely high priority amongst boards and commissions at the second community meeting. And so what you'll see as you flip through the plan is that there's an attempt in this plan to sort of bring those pieces of information together and fuse them into a set of priorities that deliver the greatest benefits to the greatest number of people as quickly as possible. And then, this is a question that I thought was important for staff to have the answer to, and the question is, which parks do residents want to see changed first, and which ones do they least want to see any change happening? And so we asked a two-part question, what park do you want to see changed, which park do you not want to see changed? And Big Chimneys Park and Cherry Hill Park came away. I think the clear winners in this exercise, that they had the most positive votes, and they had some of the least negative votes. And so I would say that this leads directly to sort of prioritization, that if you're looking to implement parks and projects in parks, these are the two to start with. So now we've got this grab-bag of ideas, we've got a vision statement for the parks, we've got a list of priorities to get them done, staff has a list of priorities in which to sort of tackle these things, but how do they get funded? And there were questions about funding in the parks, and I'll read this one out again as well because it's a quote. One of the responses was, "When we start to update the community and foster church, don't tax the people because you tax us on every other thing in the city, and people are tired of it." And I think that sentiment ran through a lot of the comments. Now, it wasn't in all of them, some people said, "I would pay more for this, that, or the other thing." But in general, I think people are always looking for a way to get this done without paying the full cost, and that's actually not an unreasonable thing. This is why people partner with other organizations, why you partner with other jurisdictions, you do public-private partnerships, you look for grant funding, crowdfunding for those people who do want to chip in additional dollars. All these things are ways to expand the toolbox so that the community can realize the full benefit without having to pay the full cost. And when I talk about partnerships, whether it's field space, plazas, open space, indoor facilities, greenways or parkways, there are groups out there that are looking to achieve the same thing. So if it's field space, the schools are looking for that same thing, neighboring counties are looking for that. If it's plazas, we already talked about how those feed into economic development. Indoor facilities, this is a space where you need a big footprint, but there's a way to borrow that footprint on someone else's land. If someone's building a parking garage, you can ask to build a level on top of that that's an indoor facility. And so you're always looking for a way to shave off bits and pieces of the cost in ways that are mutually beneficial for everyone. So just to recap the presentation here, Y-parks, they have a range of benefits. We talked about economic benefits, they have environmental benefits, as well as social and health benefits. We talked about, I showed a map for what the futures park system might look like, it builds on the existing parks today, and then adds to it additional accesses, additional connections, and then additional amenities. And then making it happen, the priorities were developed through the public engagement process, multiple channels, multi-avenues, and then trying to blend those together. And then the real step in terms of getting this implemented is going to be expanding the toolbox for how the city does business. And I think that's the close of the presentation. So I'm happy to take questions or comments on the chapter.
Thank you very much. Do you guys have anything to add, by the way, to what you've heard? Either one of you, all, Danny, Steve?
So thank Paul for all his work, and I've now seen this presentation a lot of time. I learn something every time, and we really appreciate all the hard work. So interested in what you guys have to say.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for all the hard work you've done over these many years, and I think it's a great presentation, Mr. Stoddard, we appreciate that. Why don't we go ahead and see if there are any comments on our end, keeping in mind that we're a little behind schedule, and so we need to keep comments as brief and quick as possible. Are there any comments or questions from anyone in city council? Mr. Duncan?
All right, you're going to put me to the test. Start the timer and go. Steve, and everybody who works on the committee that you're working on, we really appreciate all your efforts. I usually find myself dissatisfied that we are not helping you enough to do what you care so very much about. So in my two minutes and a half, I'm going to try to give a quick run-through of how I think we might align resources with our aspirations. Drawing from all the material in the reports, these are the things that I jotted down. First, I agree with the comment from the EDA that Cherry Hill Park is underutilized and poorly planned. I think that should be our first focus of improvements. Leave it up to you all to decide how to improve it, but I think there's a lot of potential there that we could achieve some good things without having to buy new land, obviously, because we already own it. Second, the cooperation with schools is so very important, not only around TJ and Mount Daniel, but obviously up at the New West City land. I would lean towards active use up there, because we need to squeeze every inch we can, every dollar we can out of the part that we develop economically. But I would like to see a lot of active use, open space up there, baseball, softball, and rectangular fields too. Third, really work hard to tap the interjurisdictional potential, Graves Park, there's a reference to, you know, refitting it for rectangular field space. I'm, as an old baseball parent, I'm going to, you know, ask for an underscore about the need for baseball diamonds there and in potentially other places. Fourth, rooftops, mentioned in the report, very important. Anytime we are considering building a building anywhere here that's going to have a parking garage, or even just the roof of the building, we need to think about that roof as a potential rectangular play space. And that goes for the projects that we're considering now for city hall, I think, maybe even the library, certainly any private development. Fifth, sort of generally, the public-private opportunities, to me, seem the greatest at Virginia Village. There's a section in your report about Virginia Village and the vision of it down the road as a recreation center, basically, if you consider the small area plan map. I'd love to see that redeveloped. I mean, it's not really, as you look at around the town, a place that's, that really shows us at our best, I think, and if we could preserve, there you go. Eight, seven, six. If you, if you, if you could preserve, yeah, almost, if you, Mr. Mayor, may I have permission to speak one additional minute? And you count, okay? Virginia Village, I think, preserve or expand the housing that's there, the affordable housing that's there, but do so in a way that opens up some of the land for, you know, rectangular use, not sure it's going to be big enough to fit even a Little League baseball field into, as an interim use. I mean, down the road, maybe there'll be a big community center or whatever there, but initially I would go with the private sector to try to develop some sort of housing option there that would free up the land for recreational use. And finally, WNOD trail, falls into also the private-public angle. You know, we've done a lot of work to try to bring, try to bring people off the trail to our commercial district, you know, wayfinding and sure, all that, but the advantage of the Broad and West proposal is that it actually brings the private sector to the trail in a much more aggressive way. There's already, you know, a fair amount of commerce related to the trail there now, but that really, to me, has tremendous potential to, you know, incentivize business activity and, you know, make that a safer, better bicycle environment, pedestrian environment, link up with the West End Park, which is working. To me, you know, that really, maybe of all, is the most immediate promising opportunity. So I'll stop there, thanks.
Well, you've used up two minutes of your next, whatever your next comments are going to be.
I only wanted to speak about two things tonight, and I'm done now.
All right. So who else has got anything to say? Any other comments, questions? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what it is we're going to be voting on, because when I, let's look at page 17, okay? We've got a list of projects here that probably exceeds, I don't know, 50 million, comes close to $50 million maybe, and we're looking at $100 million school, and work on city hall that needs to be done for public safety purposes, and a new library. So I don't know exactly, if we're voting on some basic policies and like this, the kind of the notion of this map on page 13, I can get into that, but I have a lot of trouble voting to support constructing a swimming facility, considering our other needs, or constructing a community center at $15 million. So I just, I guess fundamentally, if we, I'd like to see some sort of more public input at our level with questions like that raised, because I don't, again, there's a lot in here that I like, but this list of projects is just, it's not doable under existing circumstance. So I don't want to vote for something that's not doable.
Why don't we get Mr. Stoddard to reply to that?
Sure, if I may. That's one of the problems we ran into with the previous chapter as well, which was mobility phone mode. So there were a lot of things people wanted in terms of transportation, but the city needed some way to catalog all the needs and then sort of to start ticking off the list of what's the prioritized plan. If you open up the chapter to page 20, you'll see that's where all those projects, those projects that you were looking at, that's the wish list, and that could be 20, 30, 40, 50 years in the future. But if you open up to page 20, you'll see it breaks down, what are the things the city should accomplish in the first three years, 2016 through 2018, what are the things the city should accomplish in the following three years, 2019 through 2021, and then everything else is left in the long-term bucket. And so the costs are laid out here, and I knew that cost-sharing was going to be a big issue for this plan because a lot of these items are big-ticket. And so for each of these projects, staff identified a way of mitigating that cost or sharing it or diffusing it across multiple groups, whether that's grant funding or the multiple jurisdictional partnerships. And so I think what staff is looking to bring for council adoption is that list of projects is the wish list, and then the priorities are the sort of plan of attack for staff, understanding that all of these plans have to be opportunistic, that if it's a long-term priority, develop some sort of facility, but a developer comes in and says, "I'll provide it for you today," well, staff could jump on that. And so this is sort of barring other opportunities, this is the plan of attack.
Vice Mayor Snyder, any follow-up?
Yeah, look, let me just say, my, my three priorities would be acquire, maintain, and connect. And I just, again, I have some issues with putting forward a wish list like this, that I'm not sure there's been enough community discussion about it in a constrained sense. And my fear is, we've got so much on there that we don't really prioritize what we want to do. I, for example, I would put acquiring open space and connecting the existing parks is absolutely number one, but that really doesn't come out in this priority list. So I guess I'm saying, A, I don't know what I'm voting on, and B, as it's described, I have some significant issues. Thanks.
Other comments, questions?
And may I just respond a little bit more as well? The, I think with every plan that we adopt, there are always price tags associated with it that go beyond our immediate means. But one thing that it helps to have it in a plan is that when we go out to state or federal funding authorities, if it is in an adopted plan, it improves their ability to go out and get grants. And on page 36 and 37, there's an inventory of some of the outside funding sources that we think having these things, these goals in the plan would make it more possible that we might be able to bring some outside money in. And then one other reference I would make, historically, when we developed the open-space acquisition strategic plan, what, about 10 years, eight years ago, we identified tens of millions of land out there that might be appropriate to be acquired for park space. But the council's always in the driver's seat in determining whether we have the ways and means, and whether we can do it right now. But when the time comes, if the marriage of opportunity and the means to do it, having it already in an adopted plan does help smooth the way ultimately to make that acquisition more possible than it otherwise would be. And I think a plan like this can be viewed in that spirit as well.
All right, Ms. Oliver, and then Mr. Bruke.
Mr. Stoddard, I just had a question about the lists on pages 20 and 21 and 22. We've got short-term, medium-term, and long-term. Are these prioritized within that list? What's the order?
Within the bin, there is no order. And so I think the idea, in fact, the order they're in is alphabetized. First, the policies are alphabetized, and then the projects. And that's specifically done because when we go out and do public engagement, staff can identify what's most important, but among things that are all getting a lot of interest, I don't think it makes a lot of sense in the plan to try and order those.
Mr. Bruke, do you have another comment?
I just was going to say, there could be a suggestion of priority in that, so that's just maybe a little bit tricky in terms of perception.
Mr. Bruke?
Yeah, just, I think that's a footnote would be helpful about one that policies first, and then be the right now, but with the categories, as far as the long, medium, short, medium, and long-term, those based on priorities or just factoring in area planning process, other factors as far as how we came up with short, medium, just simply based on?
It's based on multiple factors, including certainly, it's the survey results, but added to that, it's the board and commission comments, and then there's also some staff analysis as well that went into that. And staff analysis was used most heavily in the policy actions, that a lot of times what staff saw in the feedback was that the public wanted some facility, but they what staff saw in, in the feedback was that the public wanted some facility, but they didn't necessarily list all the policies that would be necessary to get there as also being high priorities. And so what staff did is look at it and said, "All right, well, if we want to get to more field space, then we're going to need an updated priority acquisition map." And so we advanced certain policies to the front of the queue.
And talking about footnotes, while, I like the concept of having the short, medium, long term, but there may be opportunistic elements that comes in. All of a sudden, something that was in the long term. So I wouldn't want this document being held up saying, "No, we're not going to do this because you actually have it as part of your 20 inch, 21 plan. So you know what? That thing you're asking for is part of this plan. We're not going to do it because it's actually waiting for other developer to worry about it." So I just think that we'd be thinking that we may be opportunistic. We don't, we don't want the timeframe to backen by this, if you will. Often that, oh.
Sure.
Vice Mayor Snyder's point, I'm not, just so it's clear, what I'm going to keep looking at, if this is, I'm not viewing this as a C I P. Like, that, I would have extreme difficulty thinking about this as a C I P type thing. What I'm looking at this, and I'll be if I'm wrong, as far as how I'm looking at this, try a way for us to look at the C I P that we pass every year and take a look at this document and see if they're married. C I P is really about that. So, you know, I'm just sort of going to be clear, I don't want to be doing C I Ps that get into unaffordability. Nice holding exercises don't do, I'd like to see the C I P married up with reality and document sort of driving that affordability piece and prioritizing within these.
Absolutely.
That's how I'm viewing it.
Sure, absolutely. I think that makes perfect sense. As I was laying out the priorities and including those sort of estimated costs and the potential for cost sharing, in general, the only thing that doesn't have a potential cost-sharing partner is the master park plan implementation. And that's because that particular item only takes advantage of the funding that's typically available to master park plan implementation currently. And so all the other things that are listing cost-sharing, cost-sharing avenues, those are all new projects that would go above and beyond. And so I think all those things, if you were looking at a C I P, they would be highlighted with that color that says, "Only if cost-sharing is available."
But you could have an opportunity where it's part of implementation, where it's part of some cost-sharing.
Yep.
Just not to say that it happens on the school campus and cost-sharing situation. So I don't, I think, so, and again, I don't want to dive into this level of weeds, but but sort of the, where we do have cost-sharing, for a lot of these where there is no cost-sharing, it could be a private partnership that ensues even with the implementation of various parks, or it could also be grants, I think. Why am I not right in remembering? Some of the Howard Harmon was to be a grant, too. So.
In terms of the stream restoration projects, 50, 50, 50.
So, either things like that. So I would, I would just be careful about the potential cost-sharing, because I know that some of these projects, we were able to use grant monies of stream restoration, or there may be avenues for a public-private partnership. So again, just a footnote, I don't want a developer picking this up and saying, "Well, in your document, in the master, it doesn't have public-private partnership." So we don't think this is what you really meant. I just, I worry about things like that and timing, so, but I'm in favor of it, see why it's there, but I don't want to be so constrained about how we're going to fund it necessarily. I'd want some to have you out there.
Okay, Ms. Conley, last word?
Okay, what, just one thing. On page 13, where you're talking about access and buffer? When I started to read that, I thought you were going to be talking about ADA accessibility.
Sure.
And I would like for this plan to include some mention of making sure that parks are accessible and meeting ADA requirements.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, listen, I tell you, we've got miles to go before we sleep, so why don't we go ahead and round, wind this up, unless there's anything else? Yes, please, Steve.
One of the things that was very helpful to me on the board is a trip I took with Danny around to all the parks. I've lived here 17 years, and I've been to a lot of the parks, and like a lot of you walked the dog, but a lot of stuff I didn't know, and Danny's got some great insights. I know he's thinking, and maybe he's extending the invitation, he wants to organize a trip, and maybe jump ahead here to get all of you out to see it, as well as you know the parks. It was very helpful to me. And a couple of places that were spectacular, I didn't know about, and a couple of places that are really kind of embarrassing, we need to, we need to fix in the community. So I hope everybody will go on that field trip, bring some boots, and thanks for all the help and interest in parks. We certainly appreciate that from all of you.
Yep, go ahead.
If I could, I, I think that the, the board certainly went into this with the idea that, and, and I'll use the vice mayor's analogy a little bit, is that we, we have the car, we know there's a lot of different ways to get there. Now, we're going to try to at least say what some of our, where we want to end up. And I, and I understand that the price tag is, is huge and all that, and that needs to be softened. And I really like Councilman Bruck's idea of softening the timeframe, the priorities, in order to allow for all the opportunities and how we're going to pay for it. But so it really, but really, the work that was done by Development Services, and in particular Paul Stoddard, was, and the public input and the amount of meetings, the amount of time, I think if you look at your document somewhere, you'll see that this is version number 38 or something. It really was a lot of time. There was a lot of, of opportunities for the public engagement and input and things like that. But so I don't, and I think the, the bottom line is that we heard tonight, is we do need to make sure it's in here that shows what this is, and it really is a guideline for what the public wants, what the staff thinks is important, what the different committees in the city believe are important to build the future of, of our park system. And I think that's where, I believe our intentions were headed.
Well, thank you. You've done a fine piece of work, and we're greatly appreciative of all the good work you guys do throughout the year. So thank you. Why don't we go ahead and move on to the next item, as well as to you, Mr. Stoddard? Why don't we go ahead and move on to the next item, Mr. Shields?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the next item is resolution to support solarized Northern Virginia, which should be in partnership with the Northern Virginia Regional Commission and LEAP, the Local Energy Alliance Program. Tim Stevens is the chair of our Environmental Services Council and is prepared to speak to this. But we'd also note that unless there's any council objection to this tonight, we'd have this on the agenda for next week, and Bob Lozaro with the NVRC is also prepared to come and give, you know, you know, walk the council through the presentation that was in your packets.
Any quick questions? Do you have anything you need to say or want to say, Mr. Stevens?
It should be, hopefully, a straightforward presentation, and.
While you're coming up here and just speaking on the microphone.
And while you're, while you're getting ready to do that piece, the three, three minutes that we're going to give this, it's a great idea, and obviously, one that's come, has a, we've had seven communities in Virginia take part in this already. It emphasizes energy efficiency and renewable energy. And the last three months, three other municipalities have joined in, Arlington, Halifax County, Leesburg, and it's probably our turn. Bob Lozaro can say more about this, as the city manager mentioned, but it does not incur any monetary liability from the city side.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Unless there are any comments, thank you all for coming out. Thank you, Mr. Tim, Mr. Stevens, for coming out. We greatly appreciate all the good work you've done in the city on environmental matter in particular. Why don't we go on to the next item, then? We're getting, getting late here.
Okay.
Thank you again.
The next item, members of council had asked that in advance of Mason Rowe coming back to the city council, that we have a discussion about parking regulations. We received a petition for parking regulations on Park Avenue and on Grove Avenue. And, and so I've laid out, just for discussion for the council, three options, and wanted to get your, your thoughts and initial feedback on those. We've also included in the packet a map of all the existing parking regulations that are in the city today, and it's, I think that's useful context as well. What the petition requests is regulation that would allow for the residents of Park Avenue only to park on the north side of Park Avenue 24/7. So we would issue a placard, and, and that would be the, the parking regulation for that block, for the north side of Park Avenue. The Grove Avenue residents have not been as detailed in their request of the city. They've simply said that they would like it to be resident-only parking. And so I think some of the, the issues on Park Avenue are today, parking that occurs associated with St. James Church, and parking associated with the W N O D trail, where people come and park on the street and then access the trail. Some of the, a number of the houses on Park Avenue don't have driveways, and, and that's an issue for the homeowners in terms of the, the need for on-street parking. So one of the options that will, you know, what I think in terms of what we'll do next is we'll engage more with the neighbors in terms of discussion about options, and we will try to think about this in the context of citywide policy, because we do have some other requests in the Winter Hill neighborhood and, and other places in the city where this is predictable, and we'd like to have a policy that's, that we feel is expandable and can be implemented across the city. It may be, you know, what we've done in the past, there have been a number of instances where we've been pretty ad hoc, where we've gotten a request and we've just responded because we're a small city and we can do that. But it is, in terms of the long-term administrative feasibility and enforcement and really having the policy work, it'd be better if it's scalable and would work on the parks in the city. So one option would be to do precisely as the neighbors have asked. We do note in the staff report, that's, that's a regulation that is not in effect anywhere in the city today, so it would be a new thing. And right now, we don't have the enforcement capacity really set up to enforce parking regulations 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have one part-time parking enforcement officer, and police officers can do parking enforcement, but it would not be their top priority. The regulation of 24/7 on the north side of the street will also obviously have impacts on St. James. They are aware of the petition, and we'd like to try to work those, that through in a manner that, that all parties feel like they can live with. One other option, as seen on the map, we have a number of grandfathered streets, South Lee Street, South Oak Street, just as an examples, where we have permit parking only with set hours of enforcement. Those are the orange-coded areas on the map. And we typically use the decal as the permit for those. That makes it easier for the residents. They don't have to go to City Hall and get a placard. It makes it easier for us to administer. It's very visible for the parking enforcement officer. The issue with that, however, would be if you have apartment owners who decide they, for whatever reason, want to store their car on the street, if you use the decal, the apartment owners would have a decal, and so that could potentially be an issue for the residents of Park Avenue. The third option that I list here, which is the purple zones throughout the city, and this really has been our typical policy since 2008, for residential areas immediately adjacent to commercial development, where we've allowed commercial parking on the street, but we've regulated it so it's two-hour parking only, so that people aren't storing their cars on the street, but customers can come and go. And that serves to keep the, you know, the, sort of the turnover on the street satisfactory so that residents can also park on the street. Residents, of course, are exempt from the two-hour exemption. They have a decal, and, and so they can park all day long. So those are the purple areas on the map, so that would be Park Avenue, basically from Virginia down to North Oak Street and the smaller streets between Park Avenue and Broad Street. And then around Pearson Square, that similar regulation was put into effect on Gibson, Shirley, and West Westmoreland. So what we'd like to do is just get some council feedback on the options, and we'll then continue to work with the neighbors, or actually initiate working with the neighbors, because we've, I've just had one meeting with them to really sit down and hear them out, but we would engage in more detail on that. If we did do something more aligned with what the neighbors have requested, I think it would be appropriate to amend the city code, because currently, that regulation is, is not called for under the city code. And so we would bring language for that, and then we'd implement them thereafter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shields. Comments, questions from council? Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Shields, isn't it the case now that for new construction in the city, a single-family home is required to have off-street parking?
Yeah, driveway is required for R1A and R1B.
Right. So in this particular incidence, we have homes that were built before that code was in effect, which do not provide off-street parking. And we are talking about creating a regulation to allow them to park on the street, which seems to go against a code that we already have.
It's true that a number of the houses are grandfathered in without driveways. If there was a major redevelopment, we typically would, would look for a driveway on, on the, on these properties with that zoning. But even in neighborhoods where we do, where driveways are the norm, we do get requests for these types of restrictions. We typically have not granted a 24/7 type of regulation, but we've gotten them before. And so it's, this is not an unusual request.
Ms. Conley, then Vice Mayor Snyder, if you had a comment.
Do we have other neighborhoods that don't have off-street parking?
That, where the, where there's a high number of streets that don't have driveways?
Right.
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not familiar with, I think driveways are generally the norm.
It seems to be, okay.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot. It seems to me that this is already a street where the residents are challenged on a regular basis. And if, if that new development goes in without some sort of parking restrictions, I mean, the street's just going to be unusable for residents, I think. So I think we should continue to discuss it with the neighborhood. I would favor at least the, the two-hour parking restriction to start, and it may well be that after discussion with the neighborhood and we look at things, we need to go for the full way that they petitioned. But then I would certainly think there's a need for putting in some restrictions on that street right now, and I would urge us to move forward.
Uh, Mr. Bruck?
Yeah, I, I think something needs to be done, assuming the, the project does happen. What I'm more concerned about is trying to tailor, because it sounds like whatever action we're going to be taking is going to require code change. Is that, is that right? Not necessarily. It depends on how, if, if we had two-hour parking, that would not require code change. Because that's what's called. Let me put it this way, Ben. Assuming that what we think is needed, if it's not going to, you know, after talking to the community, doesn't sound like it's going to require a code change, so be it. But if it is something that's going to require a code change, I'd rather give the city manager broad authority, rather than piecemealing, having to do this 20 million times to fit particular situations. So if we're picking, I guess, two of the, two of the three options would require a code change, if I'm reading this right. So I'd rather have more broad language that lets the city manager, you know, do what's in the interest of that area and gives him enough bandwidth to do that without, you know, maybe there's some kind of check-in with the city council, some kind of requirements, but I don't want to have to amend the code every time we do a, a project. It's just not where I think the council's time is, is spent. So I know the city attorney probably hasn't looked into this yet, but I take it under Dylan's rule, we can give the city manager that type of authority to try to find the best solution for a particular problem, rather than having the council chase it.
And I would, I don't.
And you may already have that authority?
I don't want to be wishy-washy, but let me just, what the code says is, "Parking restrictions in residential districts abutting metro stations shall limit on-street parking to four hours unless otherwise determined by the city manager. And parking restrictions in residential districts abutting commercial quarters shall limit on-street parking to two hours unless otherwise determined by the city manager." So that last clause does give the city manager authority to, to go different ways. But the broad policy as enacted by the council was to keep these residential streets abutting commercial areas.
At two hours.
Open for commercial. I mean, that was kind of the main thrust of the policy. And, and so I, I think it's useful just to have the discussion with the council, where, whether at the end of the day, we need a full code amendment, or whether just act under. end of the day we need a full code amendment, or whether just act under the charter powers of the city manager. I think we can, we can sort that out. But I think it's important that we all be mindful of what the policy framework is.
So here's, that makes sense. Here's my two cents. I don't think that the council's time is well-spent on parking issues. When there's a problem, it should come to council, and council can talk to the city manager and city attorney. But I don't want to have a discussion and somehow have what is a manager's problem, if you will, of enforcing and figuring out how to deal with it, becoming a council problem every time we have redevelopment. Because all these projects are going to abut somebody. Even if it's commercial to commercial, you could have challenges there. So I just don't want to constantly be having this parking issue. And I know that we're going to have it on a, I mean, just jumping ahead to the, you know, I believe it's 400 Washington Street, which is commercial. I mean, my head was going to spin off last go-around, because we were so focused in on 100% commercial project and how we were going to make the commercial parking work. I understand that's an important issue, but we can make those issues work if we step up our enforcement powers and enforcement authorities. I just don't think that should be in the council's lane. So that's how I come at it, from a policy standpoint. And that's not to say it shouldn't ever be a council issue, but it should be a problem that the manager's not addressing, and we're getting citizen complaints to it. But I think the first knock on the door to resolve these issues should be with our enforcement arm, and that's the city manager's office. And it sounds like you may already have this authority.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was not aware that the city policy was oriented toward allowing commercial and other kinds of parking, well, basically where they felt like parking. So I, I happen to think that if you live in a single-family house, you should broadly be, will have access to the areas in front of, you should be able to park your vehicle near where you live, with some certainty of having that space available. So, and thus be preferred above somebody that wants to use the trail and, you know, that park in front of the house, if they could find some room. They do that now. I'm not going to call the police and have this strange vehicle removed. For a trailer, that might be a different matter, especially a trailer that's been there a couple of weeks. I would certainly call you guys. But that's not the issue here. You have, I think, the meat of the path forward here, not to mix my metaphors, but they, you know, you say you can work out a policy and a regulatory system that is allowed, and there's precedent, and if you can tailor that to fit the needs of residents and church community, and limit commercial parking, I think that solves a problem. So I'm thankful that you're bringing this before us. You know, we certainly would rather hear it here as opposed to getting waylaid with giant food. So, but I do think that you'd have the means available to work this out.
Ms. Conley?
So just two little things. One is, we have a lot of churches in Falls Church, and I'm just wondering if, as you're addressing citywide, the situation, if, how this is handled by other churches that have rush hour on Sundays or Saturdays, and do other neighborhoods have similar problems? So as you're looking at it globally, that could be another thing to think about. And I think that might be all.
Okay, I've got, Ms. Oliver?
Yeah, if I could just make two quick points. One is, we just had a long discussion about how we can make this city more commercial-friendly. And taking away two-hour parking on nearby streets, if you, if you bought those homes, you knew you were near a commercial district, I would think that could be seen as not being commercial-friendly. I understand the frustrations of people that live in those homes and don't have access to the parking in front of their own house, but I would want to balance that in the, in the equation. And the other thing, I guess I would just want to say is, I, I don't think that I would want to see a code or a policy in this city that discriminated against one resident compared to another resident. I don't think that where you live should make a difference on where residential parking, what residential parking you have access to. And one of the problems, of course, is that when we have these large developments coming in, and people panic about the large number of apartment residents who might be parking in front of their house, I can understand that frustration. I live in a community that has gone through this and is going through this, and I can, I can understand the frustration and feeling that you're losing your ability to park close to your own home. But I wouldn't want to codify discrimination against a group of residents.
Thank you.
I think, ma'am, I assume that you're waiting for me to say something, because your night wouldn't be complete if I didn't say something. So I will say something.
I wasn't waiting for you.
Ms. Conley. Ms. Conley is correct, that this has come up in other situations in the community. The Columbia Baptist Church parking situation was quite a, quite a problem for some number of years. My in-laws live over there. And through some combination of jawboning and just generally trying to, an agreement was, was come to that certain cul-de-sacs around Columbia Baptist wouldn't be parked in by the rush-hour church crowd, and just generally folks would not block people's driveways. And anyway, they, they got things worked out. I mean, as this, as concerned as this specific complaint, in our conversations with the neighbors, the biggest issue is not so much the project. I mean, the project could have some issues, but they're concerned about the church parking right now. And we're not really, if we have a two-hour limit, we're not really addressing that concern. So I guess I would urge some conversations, as the manager suggested, to try to see, the church is not short of surface parking. It has at least three lots, and I don't know, perhaps folks could be encouraged to make greater use of those, rather than parking on the street right in front of people's houses who are trying to put their cars there.
Thank you. Two, I've got a couple of comments, and maybe hopefully we can wrap this up. One, I agree. I think we do have to have a need to have something in place before this project frankly is approved. I know it'll be a couple of years afterwards before something might occur, if it is approved, but I think it is important to be thinking about it, as we're doing now. Secondly, I think this highlights the need for convenient free parking on-site. And it's not necessarily just the apartment goers, but if there were, for example, to be a movie component, you may have hordes of people flooding in to see a movie. And so those are the people that kind of scare me a little bit particularly. And so I think it really does highlight the need to have adequate, but also convenient parking. You don't have to go down three levels of a garage, where people will say, you know, it's a lot easier to just park around the corner and walk through this little walkway we have than to just go in the garage. So we want to find a way, as a design, to make sure people want to park on-site and not to go next door, and then it's free. And so I think that's something to keep in mind, for staff to keep in mind as this project proceeds, how convenient is the parking? Yeah, okay, they have enough parking spaces, but how do you get to them? And are they places that people want to go to? Or do you have to circle around three times underground, and it's not convenient? I think we really have to keep that in mind. Two or three, I don't know what number I'm on. I think even use the developer's traffic consultant to participate in this. Maybe not be the be-all, end-all for this, but I presume that traffic consultants the developers using have experience with parking issues, and this may be one they could offer some guidance for. May not be dispositive, but at least it's an expert, probably more than expertise than we have on staff, could participate with helping us consider some options for how to handle parking in this area. And I would use that as an ask for the developer, and see what they come back with. Fourth, or whatever number I'm on, I think it's really important to figure out how to enforce this. You could say all day long, there's no parking overnight, but if there's nobody there to enforce it, it don't matter. You know, people want to get that, that idea pretty quick, that the parking guy goes off-duty at 4:00 in the afternoon. So enforcing something at 10:00 at night, we need to think about how that's going to work, if in fact there are restrictions at that time, and whether that's the police, or what kind of policy will be implemented. But I think that has to be a primary focus of putting something in place. I would also agree with the comments about the church, getting them to use their parking as efficiently as possible. And it may be something as simple as having a parking plan, or having one person stand out there and direct people to lots. People do this all the time. My aunt's church, they have a satellite location where a bus comes and picks people up, so they don't overload the neighborhood in parking. And so I would suggest, I know you've had meetings with the church already, but trying to get people together, the neighbors, the church, you know, possibly even the developer together to try to work something out. But I think we're heading in the right direction. There's more work to be done, more outreach to our neighbors to be done, and to the various other interested parties. But I thank you for bringing this forward tonight. I think it's a step in the right direction, unless there's anything else to be said. Why don't we move on to the next item?
All right, we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you for coming out, and we're certainly willing to hear your input as time goes by, either by email, phone calls, or whatever means you may want to communicate with us. But thank you all for coming out. Okay, Mr. Shields, you want to go ahead and move on to the next item?
Yes, the next item, just very briefly, the assessor of real estate is recommending that we change the deadline for appeals for assessments from the first Friday of April to the first Friday of June. The date was changed from the first Friday in July to the first Friday in April, when we brought the tax year and the fiscal year aligned. And upon further consideration, I think the assessor's worried that that's going to put a burden on property owners, and that they would need more time to work through the administrative process to have their appeal handled before they ultimately go to the board. And so that's the reason for this request.
Any comments, questions? Is there any input from people, business community, on this? In other words, is this slowdown going to the BOE? Is it slowdown pushing it out so it's a full tax year, before you have a determination on your appeal?
Well, I'm, I'm a little worried that a lot of people might not even be aware that the date was going to be moved up to April. July's been the status quo. Everybody knows that. Everybody's used to that. And so with this change, we would communicate a lot that it's a little bit sooner, it'll be in June, but we think that that's quite feasible.
Okay. Any other, any comments on this? If not, why don't we move on to the next item? Thank you.
Next item's closed session, or council schedule, I'm sorry.
Any council schedule comments? Vice Mayor Snyder, then Ms. Conley?
Just FYI, I made a trip to Richmond yesterday on Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and on a regional transportation issue. And I thought it was kind of odd, because on Martin Luther King Day, the state legislative building was crowded with gun-carrying people. So I thought it was somewhat of a parallel universe. But in any event, I did want to note that I may miss part of the meeting on January 26th due to a Virginia Transit Association thing that I have to go to in Richmond, so.
Okay. We'll keep us posted on what transpires down there. Ms. Conley?
I just wanted to let everybody know, this afternoon, our treasurer, Jody Acosta, held a meeting in the Community Center for Senior Citizens about the tax relief program that we passed last year with the budget. There were 16 senior citizens who came. They were all really engaged. They were interested in the program. They were pleased with that it was beefed up and more robust. Of course, they all asked if we could make it bigger this year and provide more tax relief. But Jody did a great job explaining the program, and they had a lot of really good questions. And it was a group of people that have lived in Falls Church for 30, 40, 50. One lady has lived here 62 years, and they really were a treasure of knowledge and information. So I think that that is something that we need to continue to gather that group and get information from them. It was really very well done, and I really appreciate that she ran that meeting.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
Second that motion.
Okay.
Went to the meeting, it was very good. There were some budget questions that arose that I'm going to ask Mr. Lecandry about. Budget and Finance Committee meeting is scheduled to meet next Tuesday at 7:30 PM. We'll have an agenda by next Monday's council meeting. Ms. Conley, the GovOps Committee cannot meet at noon next Tuesday because of work commitment that I have. Would it be possible to postpone it until later that day, or should we move it till later the next week?
I'll vote for later that day.
Okay, so
Hold on.
We will tell the city clerk that we will keep talking until Mary Beth checks her calendar.
While you're doing that, Mr.
I can do later that afternoon, whatever works for you.
Okay, so let's
After your work event, shall we say 3:00 o'clock or 4:00 o'clock?
Yeah, let's set the GovOps Committee meeting for 3:00, and discussions about the agenda will be conducted through staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shields?
The Steering Committee, the Campus Steering Committee, will meet on Thursday this week, discuss the RFP for the next phase of the planning work. And then a note on the February 2nd work session, and the schedule that was in the packet, it did note that we will have VDOT attend that February 2nd meeting to talk about the Inside the Beltway Plan. And then, secondly, and this was mentioned at the Budget Guidance Work Session, but we'd like to bring the folks who did the compensation study to the council, so you can just get a briefing on that report, and we'd like to schedule that for the second as well. But we'll have our agenda meeting tomorrow, so we can talk.
Okay, Mr. Brook?
EDC will meet Thursday at 7:30. That's everybody's recollection as well. We're now meeting, I believe it's the fourth Thursday at 7:30. So hopefully that works for everybody. Wyatt, could you, maybe we can talk later and put together an agenda. I have a notional sense of what's going to be on it, but if we can get an agenda out, and a reminder out to everybody. I take it that that's been noticed?
Mm-hmm.
And despite it being my birthday next week, I'll be here.
He's got a birthday!
Go to Maui again, no.
Go to Maui. I do it. I do it one day.
Okay, also, I'm not going to be able to come to the meeting on Thursday. I have another commitment in the RC. Mr. Z, and then Vice Mayor Snyder?
I am going to have to ask whether there's someone here that can cover the Region Forward Coalition Quarterly Meeting. I unfortunately scheduled the review of my annual physical during that period of time, so these doctor's appointments are impossible to get. It's from 11:00 to 1:30, and the drill is you come in, you pick up, pick up lunch, and basically try to eat as quietly as you can while they go through the presentation, so. 11:00 to 1:30, in COG, Thursday.
Of this week.
This week.
Okay, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just very quickly, Mayor Tarter and I attended the Council of Governments Board meeting, and there were several important issues, but the Council of Governments will continue to take a look at the recent metro incident, and task the emergency preparedness council with making any appropriate recommendations, as well as reviewing the protocols that may have been involved. I wanted to report on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, unless there's anything else.
I'm sorry, there's one other thing. There's been a lot of conversation about the library that have occurred among one-on-one council members, and I talked to my father-in-law about it. I just want to make sure to fully disclose that such conversations are going on, just so folks know that we are talking about the library. The Library Board meets on Wednesday. I don't know if anybody's going to be able to attend or not. I just wanted to put that on the record, and look forward to hearing what people's thoughts are on what we're going to do with the library.
Okay, anybody else have any additional comments? No, seeing none? Why don't we go into closed session, if we can?
Do you have the forums?
Yes, I do. Okay, well, thank you for those of you who are not going to be sticking around for coming out tonight. I'm speaking to you, Tom. Thank you for coming out. Pleasure to see you again. And why don't we go ahead, and I'll go ahead and do a motion here, or record a motion, upon a motion made by Councilmember
Z.
And seconded by Councilmember
Conley.
And passed by voice vote of City Council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 7 of the Code of Virginia, for consultation with the city attorney regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice. One, voluntary concession standard agreement, and two, treatment of substandard lots. Councilman Brook?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session?